Meeting called order.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 et cetera, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by advertising in Star Ledger, on the web of Colkey, Haiti Progress, and Los Amara Conno newspapers, and by distribution to the administrative offices of Newark Public Schools. A copy of the meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting for Tuesday night, June 20, 2017.
Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united in God, in individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
President.
Ms. Carter. Ms. Von Sekka.
Yeah.
Ms. Gaddy.
Present.
Ms. Garcia.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Ms. Owens.
Present.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Present.
Corvus presents the chair.
Thank you. We'll now have greetings from the principal of Oliver Street School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thank you. We have a PowerPoint that we're putting up. I'll just give it a moment to get up there. Meanwhile, my name is Douglas Petty, and I'm privileged to serve as the principal at Oliver Street School. I'd like to welcome all of our guests here today, including our parents, our community members, faculty and staff, Superintendent Serf, and of course, the Board of Education. Newark Oliver Street School is proud to be able to host its first advisory board meeting in this facility. I want to clap that up. Just a little over one year ago, Oliver transitioned from its former location right down the street to this brand-new state-of-the-art facility. And during that ribbon-cutting, I assured everyone how I had zero doubt that the 149 years of excellence and tradition that has become Oliver would not only continue, but would afford students with more access and more opportunities to grow and flourish like never before. If you'd allow me a couple of minutes, I'd like to share some of these amazing accomplishments over the last year. Primary-grade students were able to engage in learning like never before with hands-on and interactive activities. Students, each with their own laptop, were able to access and explore new content and concepts right at their desks. New science labs allowed students to participate in experiments. And after-school opportunities continued as students collaborated in their learning. After-school opportunities continued. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. S and Owls, we're going to talk about, stands for Service to Others. Our students engaged in many selfless acts, raising money for several organizations, including pennies for parents where they raised nearly $12,000. Yeah, if you could give them... In addition, Oliver has received several grants and awards this year, including the BASF Science Education Award for $5,000, the Scholastic Reading Club Award for $4,500, and a partnership with ShopRite and Fuel Up to Play 60, who generously gave Newark Public Schools and Oliver Street School $20,000 to start up a school wellness initiative. This year, Oliver's students took first place in girls' basketball, first place in girls' soccer, and first place in the Excel After-School Soccer Tournament. So if we could give those students a round of applause, that'd be great. That was in addition to several art, music, and performance awards. We continue our community collaboration with several organizations, including the Liberty Science Center, Seton Hall University, the US Army, NJ PAC, the NJ Devils, Madison Square Garden, the Ironbound Community Corp., Newark Police and Fire, and many, many more. Today, we actually worked with Samsung in our robotics lab, creating an interactive classroom collaboration with a classroom in Portugal. We plan to continue this relationship over the next years, collaborating on both community and global initiatives. We're supporting the environment and contributing to beautifying our community. We've planted 39 trees, in addition to other plantings. There we go. And we've been featured on the news for our Lion King performance. Next year, we plan on performing Aladdin, so we invite you all to come back for that performance. And just yesterday, we were on NJTV News for our efforts and participation in STEM Week. This is in addition to the already K through 8 comprehensive STEM program offered to every single one of our students. There really isn't a dull moment in our community that cares. Moving forward, please be assured that being number two is never good enough, so I promise my continued relentless drive and dedication to making this school number one the best learning opportunity for our children, without a question. Thank you for all of your time and your continued support.
Thank you very much for that outstanding presentation. Now we'll have recognition. Well, I'm going to ask the vice chair of our community engagements, Ms. Josephine Garcia, to read the resolution for our weekway band. Yes. I'm going to ask alumni Kim Gaddy to join her at the podium.
Are we going to have anyone come up in the school?
Yeah.
Band, weekway band, please stand and come to the front. Yes. Can you come on up? Yeah. Can I walk this way? No. Nope. Hard to be Indian.
As a proclamation, on behalf of the Newark Board of Education, a recognition and appreciation of the Weekway High School Marching Band. Whereas the Weekway High School Marching Band has a long and exemplary history of excellence in music and band performance, and is regarded as one of the best marching bands in the nation with a diverse repertoire of music and performance. Whereas members of the Weekway High School Marching Band practice the core belief of the high school name, every student can achieve. Every student achieves when they develop self-esteem and self-advocacy skills. And every student achieves in an environment that fosters high expectations. Whereas the Weekway High School Marching Band has made great achievements, setting a high standard for music and performance for their peers at the Orlando Fest, the annual National High School Marching Band competition. Whereas in Orlando, Florida, the Weekway High School Marching Band was presented with the First Place High School Parade Band Class A Award, which recognizes the best high school marching band in the nation. Whereas the leadership of the Weekway High School Marching Band has been integral to its success, starting with the dedicated leadership of the band director, Michael Page, who this year is celebrating 20 years as director, along with the unselfishness, volunteerism by the alumni, Mr. Daryl Taylor, 30 years. His son Maurice Taylor, 10 years as a drumline instructor. And Jamal Littles, 15 years as hornline instructor. And principal Lisa McDonald and the staff who continues support, guidance, mentorship, and encouragement has allowed band members to soar. The Weekway High School Marching Band continues to represent their high school. Newark Public Schools and the city of Newark, with distinguished and honor, winning the High School Parade Band Award, coming in the top three places over the years of being a participant. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education and the Newark Public Schools hereby applaud and congratulate the Weekway High School Marching Band, recognized nationally as one of the best marching and parade bands in America. You have your chair, Marquise Lewis, vice chair, Tate Padilla, and our superintendent, Christopher D. Serf.
Crystal, we have them. Oh. Yeah, Tyree. Oh. Mary.
Yeah.
My name is Michael Page and the band director of Weekway High School. I just wanted to give thanks to all who recognized us and who supported us through the years. Newark Public Schools, the office of the mayor, police, fire department, is all. The Alumni Association has raised money to support us when we didn't have uniforms and transportation, so I wanted to give thanks for everyone who supported us, and especially, of course, to the marching band, who, these kids work hard every day. We practice every day, and it's difficult through hard times, but we still pull through, and it keeps them out of trouble, it keeps us focused and on target. Thank you very much.
Mr. Teller, Mr. Teller, can you come back to the stage? I just want, you just stand around and look at them. Mr. Teller, I just want to give him a round of applause for his 30 years of service. Volunteer service. Volunteer service, 30 years. Last week, and the reason why I did that was because last week, when Mr. Teller came and spoke before the board, I felt his passion and his love for his children when he said, "I have to go in my own pocket sometimes and wash their uniforms." Some of us know we won't even wash our own kids' uniforms. But he go in his pocket, he volunteer his time, and he been doing it for 30 long years, so I think he need a round of applause for that. At this time, we're going to have the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Move it. This is a motion to approve them together?
Second.
Uh, do you want more stuff? All right, it's moved by, you okay with that, Mr. Bledsoe?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a motion to take all these as a package. Moved by Mr. Padilla, seconded by Mr. Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, we're going to take them as a package. Can I have a motion to vote on these minutes?
Vote on what items? I don't have this one clearly.
That was a motion to vote on the minutes together, not a motion to actually vote on the minutes.
Can we get a motion?
Motion. Bledsoe.
Take it.
Garcia. This is a motion to approve items 62, 63, 64, May 16, 2017, business meeting minutes, May 23, 2017, regular board meeting minutes, May 31, 2017, board retreat meeting minutes. This is a motion to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries, the minutes are approved.
Now we have our student rep report.
Good evening, everyone. Since my last speech, or since my speech last month, I got the chance to meet with several district officials, and I'm happy to announce a few changes in the role of the student representative for next year. So first, the student representative will have a monthly check-in meeting with Mr. Hagerty, the chief academic officer of the district, so that the rep has a safe space to ask questions, get additional information, and so on. There will also be a new point person for the student rep role, Dr. Williams from the Office of Student Supports, and she will give the student rep relevant advice, information, and guidance regarding her monthly report. Next, there will be quarterly meetings with the student representative and the high school students to discuss problems, challenges, and successes in the high schools. The dates and times for these will be set in the coming months. Additionally, the student representative will have various social media accounts to reach out to the public. These will be run by the student rep, but the passwords will be shared with district officials just for everyone's security. Finally, the student representative will have an email account in order to communicate with the board members and the public more effectively. I hope that with these additional supports in place, my successor Gina will be able to be a more effective student representative than I. Saying goodbye to this role in this district is really bittersweet. As excited as I am to continue my education, I'm sad to leave behind a school system that has given me so much and a district that has also given me so much. I'd like to thank my peers, teachers, and connections in the district who helped me figure out how to become a student representative and how to improve the role for next year. I know that being a teenager, I can be a bit uncouth, so I wanted to apologize for my last meeting. So I want to say thank you and sorry to everyone who had to put up with me. And to the next representative, Gina, I want to say congratulations, and I hope that you have very good luck in your role next year. That's all. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Laura to join me at the podium with our vice chair. Laura, don't be disappointed. This year, you represented over 35,000 students in this district. You have the opportunity to go away to college, and a lot of people don't have that to brag about. You was a voice for 35,000 children. They depended on you, and you let your voice be heard because their voice wasn't being heard. So thank you for all you done in this last year. We want you to come back. This was just your appetizer. Now, when you come back, you get your, your, uh, full course meal. You get your entree when you come back as a board member. And I pray that you do do that someday, because you've lent it so much to this board as a student rep. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we recognize you as the student rep for your outstanding performance during your term in office for the 2016-2017 school year.
Oh, thank you.
And Laura will be going to NJIT. Now we'll be swearing in our next... What did I say? I must say student rep. I must say swearing is student rep.
Oh, you're right.
Now we'll be swearing in our newly-elected student representative. Ms. Gina from Eastside High School. We asked Gina Mom to come up with her. And I saw Dr. Santos, too. Dr. Santos, come on, join. Always wearing that Eastside on you.
Hi, how are you? Congratulations. Okay, Ms. Matos, please repeat after me. Put your right hand there and raise your other hand. Okay. I, Gina Matos.
I, Gina Matos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And also to the governments.
And also to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Gina Matos.
I, Gina Matos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications for a student representative.
The qualifications for a student representative.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties that office.
Perform all the duties that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I was told my biography was going to be read, but I guess not. Okay, so I'm a rising senior at Eastside High School. I am the president of my school's National Honor Society, the secretary of my school's student council. I'd first like to start off by thanking the people who made this possible, such as my counselor, Ms. Knapp, who went above and beyond to help me and accommodate me so that I could get the word out about the election, and of course, my principal, Dr. Santos, for all the support. I'd also like to thank my family, especially my parents, who continuously push me to accomplish anything because they know better than I what I am capable of. And thank you to my friends who told their friends to vote, who spend their lunch periods showing people how to vote, who understood how much this means to me and came to support me today. Thank you to Laura, Dr. Williams, and Ms. Deering, who I have not known for long, but have been in contact with since we received the results, and who have been nothing but supportive. And last but not least, thank you to the board for this opportunity. I look forward to working and building close relationships with you all. I plan to focus on things larger than school lunch, such as student voice and budget cuts. I am aware of what the workload this position contains, but I am also aware of the power I now have, and I will use it to the benefit of all of Newark. Newark students can count on me. I won't let you down. On Monday, I attended Eastside's graduation, where I accepted the torch on behalf of my class from the graduating class of 2017. I ended my short speech with, "You leave the torch in your school, our school, in good hands." Because sometimes you need that extra reassurance to let go of something that's yours. So I'd like to say to Laura, "You leave your position in good hands. I look forward to this upcoming year." Thank you.
Gina, where you going? Your first meeting. Sit right here. Right here. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Let's stand up for Laura. Laura, drop the mic. Okay. Next is the board chair report. Good evening to Superintendent Serf, executive staff, fellow board members, Newark community. It's a pleasure to be in this awesome building. Look around, don't it look so beautiful? Looks so good. Let's give a hand to the staff here at Oliver Street School and to the students. This evening marks the end of the school year 2016-2017. But I can't help but to mention and to acknowledge our fun day, the first Newark Public School Fun Day that was organized by our very own Assistant Superintendent Roger Leon. Can we give him a round of applause? If you missed it, you missed a great moment. When you walked in, you felt at home. They had everything that you wanted. Kids went crazy when they walked into the park. My four-year-old, I couldn't keep him close to me because he wanted to go everywhere. The children had fun. Families, our employees, brought their families out. It was an amazing day. At the end of the day, I looked over to Mr. Leon and to some other staff members who were sitting with me, and I said, "This is the Newark Public Schools I remember." Well, we all was a family. I want to thank Mr. Leon and his whole committee for organizing... for organizing an awesome, an amazing day, a day to remember in NORC Public Schools. What that showed me, what that showed me is that we still have people who understand the pride of NORC Public Schools. To understand that in order to get people to feel comfortable, you have to first show them that you appreciate them. And that's what we did on that day. Our staff members were smiling, and they were happy to see that the people that lead them really appreciated the work that they do each and every day. So today, I salute you, all our staff members of NORC Public Schools. While we close out our school year with graduations, promotions, ceremonies, and celebrations, my heart is also heavy as I reflect on the recent death of three of our students. Can we please have a moment of silence for Christopher Gibbs of Berenger Arts, Rashawn Cooper of Weekway High School, and Kayla Mentos of Ann Street School? Thank you. Their presence will be missed, but their memories won't die. As we say goodbye to them, we say today is a new day in NORC Public Schools. Now it's time that we get to the business of this district. As everyone begins to take their vacations in July and part of August, we as a board will be preparing for the upcoming school year and training to become a more effective governing body. I am excited about several planning sessions that we will be posting soon around creation of two major committees, our Student Government Council and the Parent Advisory Council. My ears are ready to listen to you, the community, as how we can effectively activate these two committees. Please apply to be a part of our Transparency Committee. The Transparency Committee is now open. It is posted online. The link is on our district website. The deadline to apply is June 28th. I urge you, parents, I urge you guardians, I urge you community members to get involved. This is the time to get involved. Not to complain, but roll up your sleeves and get some work done. I am waiting for the day that we can present a solid, comprehensive plan to effectively end one NORC enrollment and make enrollment truly about parent choice so that we can as a community feel comfortable with sending our children to our schools that we choose to send them to. So that will be the charge of the transparency committee to develop and produce a plan. In my closing, I would like to thank all of our staff, teachers, and students for a great school year. I would like everyone to have a great summer, and let's not waste any time. Make every second count. May God bless our children, God bless our school system, God bless our city, and God bless the Board of Education. Thank you. Next, we will have our Board Resolutions. Board Resolution to Adopt the Recommendation for Class Size. That will be given by Board Member Lee Owens.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, so I just want to take a moment to talk about this final report and what we will actually be voting on this evening. So in February, the school board voted to accept the recommendation of the preliminary report, which examined class size across the district in general education classrooms, and also began to look at the demographics of the magnet schools, in particular Science Park, in terms of eligibility for free or reduced-priced lunch, English language learner status, special education status, gender, and race and ethnicity, and also neighborhood where the students live. So in this final report, the committee also examined class size for special education classrooms, pre-K through 8. The committee did want to look at high school special education classrooms, however, it was reported to us that the coding for those classrooms was not clear enough for the data to be extracted, so we weren't able to look at that in this report. But hopefully that'll be something we can examine in the future. And then also, the committee examined the rest of the magnet schools, the other five magnet schools, to look at those same areas that I just addressed earlier. So I'm definitely not going to read the revisions, but I did just want to point out one other, at least one other magnet school, because we talked about one last week, sorry, but right before that, in terms of special education. When we looked at pre-K through 8th grade, what we found was that actually only 14 of those classrooms, which there are 212 for this school year, were oversized, and they were oversized by one or two students. And this is data that we received from the district. And in those instances where there were one or two extra students, depending on the classifications of the students in that classroom, the district applies for a waiver from the county superintendent so that the district can hire an additional aide for those classrooms so that they can still be in compliance with the law. So we are appreciative of those results. In terms of the magnet schools, so I think last week we spoke about art, so I'll just read what we, some findings from university. University student population is majority black, averaging a rate of 81.9% over the four years examined. Within this racial/ethnic group, female students are enrolled at a higher rate than male students. However, the data shows the gap closing from the 2011 to the 2016 school year, where the gap was at 19.9 percentage points in 2011, it was only at 9.7 percentage points in 2016. So this is actually, this case is indicative of something that we found overall, which is that basically around the district is 50/50 male and female. However, when we examine the enrollment at the magnet schools, there are more females are enrolled at these schools at a higher rate than males. Some schools, 60%, even up to almost 70%. So that brings the question, what is happening to our male students when it comes to enrollment in magnet schools? So I just wanted to bring that example to show you what kind of information is in this report, and it leads us to the recommendation that the committee is making, which is that this report be used in the Transparency Committee since it is being charged with looking at enrollment and suggesting how to tweak the system, make it better, or completely remove it, if we can do that. So, uh, this information is very important, and it shouldn't just go to the wayside. So that's what we're voting on this evening, that we adopt that recommendation, that all of this information be used in the Transparency Committee. Thank you.
So can we get a motion?
Motion.
I have Ms. Von Seka moving, and Ms. Gaddy second. Okay, this is a motion, Board Resolution to Adopt the Recommendation from the Class Size and Composition Order Final Report, moved by Ms. Von Seka, seconded by Ms. Gaddy. Roll call, Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Von Seka.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Padilla.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, real quick. I also just wanted, since we did just pass it, let everyone know that the version will be finalized, and this will be available on the district's website. The preliminary report is already available, but we're gonna make the final report available as well.
Can everyone vote on their computer, please? Sorry, we are having technical difficulty. All right, next agenda item is our Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Thank you for being here tonight as we celebrate the end of a really terrific year. I want to thank Principal Petty and the folks at Oliver for being such great hosts. Love your PowerPoint. A lot of great things happening here in this spectacular new facility. Want to acknowledge just a couple of things before we get to the business at hand. First, I would like to again thank everyone involved in the Fun Day event. We had about 4,000 folks present, and I think acknowledging Mr. Leon's, Assistant Superintendent Leon's, efforts, is he still back there? I can't see him. He's back in the corner. He's sitting in his usual place, back in the corner for, uh, he is the maestro in chief of producing incredibly high-quality events. He does many other things, but that was a really, he really outdid himself. If you look in your, uh, board members, if you look in your book, you'll see a document that looks a little bit like this. And behind it is a beautiful set of pictures from the, um, from the event. Do you all have that? So that will be a memory, that will be a set of memories. I want to thank CASA, our Principal and Administrators Union, and I want to thank Local 68, the union that represents custodians, and others for their support for, uh, for the event. Not everybody supported it, as you'll see from the packet, but I know that we have a great debt to our teachers whose idea this was to behave as an organization that treats everybody like members of the family. So thank you, Marquise, or Mr. Mark Gill, uh, Lewis, for saying that. It was a really a terrific, terrific, um, event. I also want to acknowledge, if you, can I embarrass you, Caleb? Yeah, yeah, stand up, stand up. He hates this, he hates this. So we were, yeah, okay, he's not gonna stand up. I just want, I just want to acknowledge Dr. Perkins, whose incredible service over the last many years. He's really changed the face of education in this district in a very quiet, very humble, and very successful way. I personally have respected and honored your work and all that you've done. It is with great sadness that I announced, as we did announce last week, that Dr. Perkins is returning from whence he came, at least where he got his PhD, to the Seattle Public School District with his beloved family. So may I ask for a big round of applause for Dr. Perkins? We are gonna cover a couple of things today, and, but I want to begin by asking Ms. Irene Cooper-Bosh, who is here, and I think with Mr. Drinker, to take the podium. You know, there are a lot of unsung heroes in this, uh, in this district, and one of them without doubt is the Victoria Foundation, for which these good folks are the leadership, the leadership team. We don't say thank you quite often enough, but in a very quiet way, their generosity has made an enormous difference in the lives of tens of thousands of children. So they didn't ask for an opportunity to talk about all the good things they're doing, but I insisted that we give them a minute or two just to talk about the Victoria Foundation and their work this year and in general. Thank you, Irene.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Searf.
Oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, I learned something about you today. You were in the Peace Corps in Botswana.
That's true.
That is true. That is pretty cool.
I was actually a teacher, a middle school teacher, and what I learned from that experience is that I could check that box off. It's so hard to be a good teacher. And, and what I learned is I have such respect for teachers. I knew that was not a career choice for me. When I walk into a school in the district and I see teachers hard at work, I have such respect and awe because it's a really, really tough job. So thank you, members of the board, parents, educators, students, guests that are here today. I appreciate the time to have a few minutes to talk about Victoria Foundation. We were founded in 1924, and we started a more than 50-year partnership with the city of Newark in 1965. And that partnership was, began with the Board of Education here in Newark. We adopted the Cleveland Elementary School, and we had a 19-year relationship there. It was a remarkable experience for Victoria trustees, and we, we took that and we never left the city. That was it. That became our sole mission. And while we were at Cleveland Street, the partnership supported the first pre-K classrooms in the district. In fact, Lady Bird Johnson came to Newark and visited the Cleveland Street School. You may or may not know that she was the honorary chair of the Federal Head Start Program. And many of the things that she learned at Cleveland Street was what became incorporated in that first Federal Head Start Program, and it was right here in Newark. There was full-day kindergarten, the first computer lab in the district. And there were three organizations that were providing mental health services and counseling support for children and families, and they had office space inside the school, and that was part of that partnership. So over the last 93 years, Victoria Foundation has awarded 300 million in grants. And over the last 10 years, that's been about $100 million. And 40 million of that over the last 10 years really directly supported and benefited children in the Newark, in the public school system. And I wanted to talk a little bit, because it actually comes up, Mr. Chairman, in your docket a little bit later on. This example of one of our direct partnerships is this, it says 24 Newark Public District Schools. So in past years, Victoria Foundation has funded a traditional public school here and there. But this last year, we proactively reached out to all the principals and leadership of the traditional schools, and we said, "We want you to participate and get some grant funding." We put aside a half a million dollars, we had a technical assistance session, and over half the schools applied for grant funding. They, the applications that came in totaled $3.5 million. So we did increase our pot, but you can see we, we made awards. This is awards for the 2017, 18 school year of $630,000. And I've got a couple of examples I wanted to share with you of these, of these school grants. So I actually went to, I served as a program officer for, at Roberto Clemente Elementary School. They have this awesome music teacher there. And so there's a grant that the trustees of the foundation awarded, $40,000, to run an after-school program next year for 80 children who are designated special needs. And it's an arts and special education after-school program throughout the whole school year. At Harriet Tubman, $25,000 for a family engagement program, which includes a lot of activities on weekends after school for parents, but also some professional development for teachers to help them become more welcoming and how to help them engage parents in a more productive way. At Ann Street School, there's a $20,000 grant for an underwater robotics program. That's truly awesome. At Shabazz High School, we have a $50,000 grant, a partnership with the Pathways to College Program, that are going to actually work with the eighth graders that are about to transition into the school to give them supports for that transition. And then one more example, $50,000 to Sussex Avenue School. This is for a partnership with the Greater Newark Conservancy. It's a four-week STEM summer camp program for hundreds of kids. So later on, many of the grants that we made to these Newark Public Schools had a nonprofit partner. But in some cases, the district is serving as the fiscal sponsor. That's why a little later on in the meeting today, there's some action items to accept those grants. Let's see, we had, the Higher Ed Liaison, if you can go back, that is a new grant, $95,000 grant to the district to bring on a full-time person who will work with guidance counselor staff and the Newark City of Learning Collaborative, which is a collective impact effort to increase the number of Newark high school students that succeed in college. It's a college access and success program. And we're very excited about that new position. And then the next two, which are again just examples, we've been funding these for many years. The Summer Plus Program is basically extending your summer school program by a couple of hours to provide arts programming for the kids. So they stay a little bit longer and they get really high-quality, wonderful arts programming. And then, of course, I think all of you know about the Student Center. That's a really wonderful program where high school students from across the district come together, which is a rare thing, and they have high-quality after-school programming throughout the year.
And if you look up on the slide here, you'll see for this past school year, in partnership with organizations that provide wraparound support, other type of support for NORC students, we have a couple of examples, and if the board would just indulge me for a second. The NORC Debate Academy, been around for a number of years. Our own Roger Leon was a former debate champion. But Roger is still a champion of this program. He's on the advisory board. I serve on the advisory board. And last year, we made a grant of $70,000 and is working in 26 schools, serving 600 students. At the bottom there, or close to the bottom, you see a grant of $140,000 to students to science. And that's actually two grants in one. One grant is a $40,000 grant that takes NORC students from 10 schools, 850 students out to their state-of-the-art tech center in, I think, East Hanover. I believe Superintendent Chris Surf and the mayor and others went out there and were so impressed by it, came back and said, "We need one of these in the city of Newark." So Victoria and many others have come and stepped up and provided a $100,000 grant for the build of that new tech center that should be coming online pretty soon. And we mentioned Pathways to College. Pathways to College, over the years, has helped hundreds of NORC kids from the traditional schools not only get into college, but get through college. And now it's working, I think, in three, maybe four schools, about to go into Shabazz, make a fourth school. And again, working with scores of NORC students, not only to get them in college ready, but to get them through college, to graduate, to come back and be productive members of this community.
And one final slide. I wanted to tell you about a special grant that we made this past year. So Percy Chubb III is the grandson of the founder of the Victoria Foundation. He passed away in March last year. And the trustees made a special grant in his name, a million-dollar grant, to endow what is called the Newark Field Trip Fund. That fund sits at the Community Foundation of New Jersey, but it kicks off about $50,000, $60,000 a year to provide mini-grants for transportation. So these are educational field trips for any school in the district, above and beyond what they're already doing, to make sure that more kids get a chance to get exposed to high-quality field trips across the school year. And the last message for the Board of Trustees that I want to leave you with is, Victoria Foundation, we really care a lot about the district and especially as we go into the return to local control. We would love to be able to be supportive and help in whatever way we can as the board moves from being an advisory board to a fully empowered board. There are some skill sets, there's some learning. Whatever we can do to help in, to just grow the capacity and the strength of the board is something we'd love to talk to you about. And we want to make sure that, because if you're successful, our kids are successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Big hand for Irene and Craig and the Victoria Foundation. And by the way, this isn't always said in this world, a complete joy to work with. So we really, we really appreciate all that, really all that you are doing. I forgot to mention in my other comments, one more piece of thanks. I do want to again acknowledge Board Member Owen's work on this class size report. The depth of analysis, it really, you know, a lot of people have a point of view about things, but it's helpful to actually have a factual basis from which to form those points of view. And her labor, which was really, really comprehensive, has provided that. So I think all of us are grateful, all of us are grateful for that, very grateful for that. So now, we're going to turn our attention to the subject of science. And we have a lot to say on this. So let me start with this. We have talked about increasing graduation rates, we've talked about progress in reading and in math. But two and a half years ago, or two years ago, we got together and we said, "We really want to achieve something else." And that is, we want Newark to be the leading STEM education city in the country. STEM, of course, stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And there are those who insert an "A." Am I right, Ms. Williams? For A for Arts, STEM STEAM. But it is traditionally Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And we really wanted to do that for a number of different reasons. First of all, there is a very significant, what I call, an employability gap in this state. Meaning, there are lots and lots of jobs in the STEM fields that can't find talented people to fill them. So this comes from a history major, mind you, and a former history teacher. But I will tell you that if you are looking at a future that it can be absolutely secured, a career in STEM, a career in science, a career in allied health, et cetera, is a path to a really secure future. So we wanted to make sure that, and we wanted to make sure our students really have the foundations they need to do that. Secondly, the landscape is changing around science. I remember in my era, and I maybe, may have aged out here, I look around. But in my era, we got, you know, you had the big fat chemistry book, the big fat physics book, and the big fat biology book, and it was kind of a little bit of a struggle to get into it. And when you think about it, science ought to be the most interesting, most accessible subject there is for students. You blow stuff up, you figure out how things work, you mix things, you light things on fire. I'm being facetious. But there's a lot of really fun things about just figuring out how the world works. And we have managed to make that not nearly as intriguing and as exciting as the subject matter deserves. And that is reflected in a whole new body of standards. It's called the Next Generation Science Standards, which are really focused on doing, on performance tasks, on critical thinking, on analysis. We'll hear more about that in a moment. But that is another reason to put a real focus on science education. So we are absolutely committed, as we transition to local control, to, with the support of the board, with the support, by the way, of Victoria Foundation, to make this really a leading light in science education. And I am incredibly happy that, that the leadership of that within Newark Public Schools is in really, really, really good hands. One of our sort of quiet heroes in this district is the head of our science program, Ms. Ivory Williams. Stand up, take the podium. So I'm not kidding. You know, that everybody, you always say nice things from the podium. Well, I got to tell you, I can't think of enough nice things to say about Ivory. She's born and raised in Newark, she attended Harriet Tubman School, she attended University High School, where she, by the way, was valedictorian. I'm going to embarrass you, where she was valedictorian. She then proceeded to go to NJIT, where all she did was graduate summa cum laude with a BS in... That's the top of the game, right, by the way? With a BS in Applied Mathematics and MS, my goodness, in Biomedical Engineering. She then went on to teach at Arts High School, where I think she is completely responsible for our board chair, is that right? Weren't you a student at first?
No, we were in the building.
Yes, she was, okay. All right, Ivory, you can't win them all, all right? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. And she now leads our science education effort. And I would love, if you would indulge us with an overview of your work. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. It wasn't too embarrassing.
Okay, good.
So, good evening, everyone. Happy, proud privilege to be here this evening. So to talk a little bit about the science vision for Newark Public Schools. I've been in this position for a little over three years now. And really figuring out where we wanted to take the science program was the first priority. And quickly, as opportunities and initiatives presented themselves, it became clear that there were three major areas where the work needed to happen. The first was around strategic partnerships and initiatives, the second around professional development, and the third, curriculum and assessment. So I just want to highlight some of our partnerships before I take a deeper dive into the curriculum and assessment piece and PD as it relates to our standards. And so something very exciting that's been happening in Newark, and actually 26 schools in our district, is NORC STEM Week. NORC New Jersey was actually only the second city in the whole country to participate. Boston was the first last year. This is a partnership with I2 Learning. So 26 of our schools, about 2,000 students, just under 100 teachers, participated in a full week of STEM. So they dropped everything and all day, every day for a week, students engaged in one of three STEM courses. One school that participated was actually Oliver Street School. Their full sixth grade engaged in kinetic sculpture, which was an authentic STEAM project. So students built physical structures with an artistic appeal or aesthetic that worked under physics principles. And what was so exciting about STEM Week was that it wasn't just science teachers engaging in the work. There were math teachers, there were art teachers, even a few ELA teachers, federal education teachers. And actually, the media got to visit here at Oliver Street. And we have a short clip that played on NJ, I believe, TV, online.
We have a magnet at the bottom, and then there, it's moving side to side.
When you're teaching tough subjects like magnetic fields or center of gravity, hands-on is almost always the best approach. At Newark Public Schools, a couple thousand middle schoolers are doing an intensive dive into the world of STEM. That's Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics for a new district-wide program.
It is a week where in partnership with a marvelous organization called I2 Learning, we are, have 25 of our schools drop everything and do nothing but science. A hands-on, critical-thinking-oriented scientific experiment using a curriculum that was developed by a bunch of leading science educators, including MIT.
The inaugural Newark STEM Week is a big hit so far. Here at the Oliver Street School, students are working on a Kinetic Sculptures course. It's one of three made available to participating schools.
It's completely focused on middle school. So there are very important ages for a whole host of reasons about when kids start either gaining interest or losing interest in STEM fields, and we've seen that.
Ethan Berman is the founder of I2, an education company that started this program partnering with schools. Each of the week-long units are designed to get students and teachers working together to solve real-world problems.
We went to training for about two, three days and learned all the activities. As adults, we had to go through each day, like the marble run and the magnetic fields and all that. And then bring it into our classroom.
One of my favorite things was the magnets, because it seemed kind of cool, like trying to see how, like when the positive side and the positive side, they repel. And there's like this little space in between them, so they don't want to connect each other.
Then I'm just going to flip it to see if it would repel. But then it wouldn't. So I think the pivot clip would be the cause of it not moving.
The students started the week with gears, mobiles, and the physics of balance. They made a marble run, and they can't get enough.
I've always loved science and math personally. It's what I like. So that's what made me want to do this, this whole week.
So we went from the other one, the mobiles, from day one. We learned we have to find the center point to keep them in balance.
Newark hopes to expand the initiative to all of its middle schools next year, along with a robotics curriculum and a state-of-the-art tech lab.
Absolutely love it. You know, when you disguise learning as projects and fun activities, students let their guards down and creativity flourishes. So they really, really, really enjoy it.
The long-term goal here is to have a national STEM Week, so that for one week a year, students here in Newark are working on the same projects as, say, students in Boston. They'll collaborate and communicate, just like engineers do today. In Newark, Brianna Vinozzi, NJTV News.
Let me just add, just to interrupt, just very briefly, that we are the second city to do this. I went up to Boston, I was introduced to this gentleman, Ethan Berman. And by the way, it's not a company, it's a not-for-profit that sometimes gets lost to the sauce. And met with the superintendent and visited a number of the schools that we're doing. And I think there's 6,000 students doing it in Boston. And was really blown away by the quality of the instruction. And we worked together, well, I followed, you led, to implement it here. So it's a really wonderful development for the city of Newark. Thank you.
Thank you. And while the media showed up here, the Office of Science, which is me plus one, actually had the opportunity to visit all NORC Public Schools that participated throughout the week. And Oliver Street, as exceptional as Oliver Street is, and what you saw, that is what was really happening across all of the schools that participated. That was just the one captured. And definitely looking forward to bringing it to all of our schools and all of our middle schools for next year. Moving on from that, Students to Science, oh, and one other note. It didn't make the presentation, but Victoria Foundation also helped support our engagement in NORC STEM Week. So thank you for that as well. The Students to Science site that was referenced, we planned it, it's being built probably as we speak. And we hope to open that this summer. That will be a 5,000-square-foot state-of-the-art facility with over $4 million of industry-grade equipment that our middle school and high school students will have access to, fifth through 12th grade. So that is exciting, that is cutting-edge. We are definitely a city on the rise as it comes to STEM. We have a quick video for S2S, if you're not familiar with the program. And I believe these are some of our students, perhaps?
Students to Science is a nonprofit organization that encourages students to pursue careers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics in order to improve their lifelong prospects in STEM fields, for which there is a high demand and significant rewards.
Our mission is to inspire, motivate, and educate the students in that particular order. We take the kids out of their normal educational setting. We bring them to an authentic laboratory. We challenge them with real-life problems that they can relate to. And that in itself inspires and it motivates the kids.
Students who are located within a commutable distance are able to take a field trip to a modern 10,000-square-foot science laboratory in East Hanover, New Jersey. There, they work with professional scientists from local corporations on career-oriented experiments while using sophisticated laboratory equipment.
Our program is aimed at introducing STEM concepts, STEM careers, to the entire class. So everybody gets an exposure. And then what we do is we bring up to... And then what we do is we bring up to 20 professional scientists from local corporations who volunteer their time to work with the kids in the laboratory, share their experiences, why they chose to pursue a career in science, what schools did they go to, what motivated them to make that decision.
It's amazing how you see kids come alive, and you actually are running through the experiments yourself. It really ignites kids' imagination, their enthusiasm, and their adventure, they're discovering things.
To me, science is very important, because it just has an effect on the world, and the little things around you has a great meaning behind it, and how it can affect the small things and the big things you do.
We are fortunate enough to have recruited over 1,000 STEM professionals that serve as volunteers throughout the year. These volunteers, again, bring a diversity to the program that you couldn't possibly have with a full-time staff. What our volunteers love about this opportunity is, it's being a teacher, it's interacting with students, it's sharing their passion and enthusiasm for science.
We learn through experience. Our most profound learning opportunities happen when we experience something firsthand.
This hands-on learning experience provided by Students to Science engrosses students in learning about science and gets them involved in new and interesting ways. This type of learning is not only available to those who are located within a commutable distance. Students to Science, in partnership with Connectivity Incorporated and in collaboration with the American Chemical Society, has created a virtual laboratory program, also known as the V-Lab. The V-Lab is designed to eliminate geographic or language constraints, broadening our reach to serve a wider audience. S2S is no longer limited to those students, teachers, and volunteers who are located near our Technology Center in East Hanover.
So, one more sort of word about the history of this. So, you know that beautiful laboratory you saw the picture of with the students and the scientists and the gorgeous facility, and as I like to say, this is not your parents' Bunsen burner, this is extremely expensive, high-end analytic and chemical equipment. So, exactly what you see is currently being built at 765 Broad Street. When we moved our, agreed to move our headquarters to there, we negotiated a special space where we are building that out, and I just wanna point out that this is gonna be available to every student in Newark.
Grades five through 12.
Okay, five through 12, every student in Newark, grades five through 12. But equally as important, this is going to include a piece of software called Connectivity, which will enable the delivery of digital science lessons, and by the way, other things as well, to every device in every school in the district. And it's interactive, and I don't believe the purely digital delivery is the right answer, so it is meant to work hand-in-glove with our science educators and others. So, it is a, I think, a really important sort of leg of the stool here as we move forward. We also, by the way, this is sometimes how we do things, we, it's, we have $4 million worth of equipment contributed, we have about $1 million worth of cash contributed, we have about $7 million to go to fund this for five years. So, we're a little bit ahead of our skis on this. It's not gonna be public money, don't worry, board. But it's something that we are feverishly engaged in fundraising for right now, to make this dream a reality for every student in Newark. Ivory?
All right. And so, moving from S2S, another major initiative we have going is robotics. So, being a native of Newark, I actually have the privilege of some of the great legacy that was part of the science program in Newark. One of those was the robotics program. So, I can recall a time where nearly every school had a robotics program. Currently, there are only three active, highly functioning teams, and so, it is a major initiative to make sure that as we make Newark a center for STEM education, that robotics has to be part of that. And so, we have a four-year plan to make sure that we return robotics back to schools, both elementary as well as high school. There were some small pilots that started this year. The expansion for next year is to 17 schools, 11 elementary, three new high schools in addition to support to the three existing high school programs. Did you wanna say?
Say, we're about $400,000 short on that one, too. I'm not looking left, I'm just, I'm just saying. Okay. But that is a really, by the way, if you really wanna have fun, go to robotics competition, they're held all over the state, they're held all over the world, actually. And the kids are given an assignment, like build a robot that throws basketballs through a hoop, and they drive around, and they program, and it's an extraordinary, extraordinary thing to watch. And it's generated a lot of engineers, a lot of computer scientists.
Absolutely. And they get tens of millions of dollars in scholarships each year for students entering college that participated in robotics program as well. And so, stepping back from those strategic partnerships, which certainly are crucial to the work that we're doing, I wanna bring you to the core of the science vision and program for Newark Public Schools, which we're calling our investments. And there are really two investments. They work together, phenomenon-driven instruction and three-dimensional learning. For probably about the next 20 minutes or so, I'm going to walk you through an explanation and some examples of what that is, and the board, I'll have you engage as adult learners in some activities around that as well. And so, what this idea of phenomenon-driven instruction is about is really about no longer thinking about teaching science and topics. So, it's not that we're learning this particular topic because it's in a textbook, because it's in the test, because it's in the standards, but really reconnecting students to the world around them. If we think about the vast majority of scientific principles that we know now, they were discovered by people that were paying attention to the world around them, and they wanted to know more, and they investigated, and they persevered to do that. If you look at the upper-left corner of the screen, I saw one of those last night. Did anyone else see one of those outside? So, it's actually a double rainbow. There's a secondary rainbow up to the left. My five-year-old daughter brought it to my attention, completely engaged her, the questions immediately started. My science education reminded me that it was refraction, right? But that was a term that I learned. As I dug more, as I looked at it, it really became interesting. So, I learned something new last night, because that phenomenon hooked my daughter and hooked me. So, you just need sunlight and rain for a rainbow to happen, and that happens pretty often, but we don't see rainbows all that often. Who knew it has to be exactly 48 degrees of the light hitting for that to happen, and even more so for the double? But just the idea that these things are happening around us, there are broad scientific principles behind them, and we've largely had students' heads in a book or following a lab. So, phenomenon-driven instruction is about re-engaging students to the world around them, sparking that curiosity, making sure that they don't lose it as they progress through school, but that it builds, and we build their capacity to learn from that, 'cause that's how the great science we know is discovered, and we need the next generation of scientists. And so, phenomenon-driven instruction is part one of how that's going to happen. The second part is three-dimensional learning. So, as Superintendent Serf has mentioned, there are new national standards for science, next-generation science standards. What distinguishes these science standards from others that came before is this idea of three-dimensional learning. So, when you think about science or science standards, most people just think about the principles or core ideas. What these new set of standards set forth is that science is not just the ideas, but it's the habits and skills that go along with that. That's what we call the science and engineering practices. That is what students are doing. They're asking questions, they're constructing explanations, engaging in argumentation from evidence, and it's around the core ideas. And then add to that how students think about the world, how they make connections from one science idea to another, those are our cross-cutting concepts. So, those are things like identifying patterns or looking at stability and change. And so, the tenet of these new standards is that these three dimensions make up science content. It's what we know, how we engage with it, and how we make connections to it across the science disciplines. And so, the image of the rope on the screen is really calling out that that's the strength of the standards. Ropes, we know, get their strength from their individual strands. If we start pulling them apart, it loses its strength. So, it's not the idea of we're doing core ideas today, tomorrow you'll get to do a lab where you're engaged in the practices, and then we'll give a final assessment where you connect it. It's that all three of these things, excuse me, are happening each day, every time kids are engaging in the work of science. This is how science happens, and so, this has to be how science is learned. Okay? And so, what's on the screen now is how these two pieces really fit together. So, it's that we're introducing students to phenomenon, we're giving them opportunities to perhaps make initial explanations, because children have an idea of how the world works, whether it's accurate or not, and then we're taking them through this cycle of three-dimensional experiences, allowing them opportunities to revise their thinking, to correct misconceptions, and ultimately arrive at a scientifically accurate explanation. And so, if you would indulge me, I just wanna give you a demonstration to just drive home the power of these two science investments. So, we're fully engaged when every class you walk into, whether it's Oliver Street School, whether it's Harriet Tubman, whether it's Miller Street, Hawkins, McKinley, both of which have their STEM showcases later on in the week, any school you walk into, regardless of who the children are, we would want to see students engaged in phenomenon-driven instruction and three-dimensional learning. And that's really where the investments are happening in science in Newark, and that is the focus of everything that we do in the Office of Science. So, thinking about those two investments being at the center, what surrounds that are the partnerships and initiatives, most of which we've already talked about. In addition to those things, we have professional development and curriculum and assessment. And so, we've already talked about many of these. I'll just call out Liberty Science Center, which Victoria does support. So, we've had some STEM camps, we have some summer camps with STEM and extended classroom experiences, all of which are supporting the science investments in the district. For professional development, there's district-wide, network-based, and school-based professional development that's supported by the Office of Science. There are program or partner-specific activities, such as those with Students to Science and I2 Learning. And we also, as a city, are represented regionally and across the state. So, we have teachers going to peer-teacher workshops with five other surrounding districts, Elizabeth, Hillside, Lynton, and Broadway. The Office of Science applied and got awarded a seat at some state-level assessment and district partnerships with about 18 other districts. And so, in terms of professional development, it's definitely layered from the most local at the school level to across the state to make sure that we're aware of what's happening in science. The punchline for tonight was supposed to be curriculum and assessment. Not that, okay. And so, thinking about curriculum and assessment, so there's work that has been done the past couple of summers, it's going to continue this summer to make sure that we have updated curriculum-guided documents available to our teachers, K-8, and for the three core high school subjects of biology, chemistry, and physics, that we have some new curricular programs, some of which were piloted this year, K-5 programs and middle school programs. And next year, we're going to launch an assessment program to bring back some level of interim assessments around science to the district, so that we can have a better pulse of how our students are performing, so that we can make sure that we can begin to have targeted efforts to close the achievement gap for our students in science. Okay? And so, that takes me to what will be the ask or action item for tonight, and that is the recommendation for adoption of a middle school science program. You saw in the clip about STEM Week, Ethan Berman spoke to the fact that middle school is when students either lose interest or begin to gain interest in STEM. And so, recognizing middle school as the highest leverage point, how it connects so well and authentically to our partnerships with places like S2S and I2 Learning, that is the recommendation of the Office of Science. This is not a recommendation that was made lightly. The process actually started close to three years ago, when I came to the position, started by identifying the needs, so conducting gap analysis, soliciting input from people both in the district and across the state, determining what the priorities were for Newark Public Schools around science, promoting those investments, and building stakeholders, and ultimately establishing a review committee that reviewed curriculum products and made recommendations. Just to be mindful of equity, that committee was open for anyone to apply. We got 36 people from across the district, that included teachers and administrators and coaches. 26 were representing K-8 grades, eight from high school, and the Office of Science were the two representing K-12. And we had meetings over the course of three months. The committee actually carefully looked at nine programs, and from the nine, three were recommended by the committee. Of those three, one, as much as it was in line with the spirit of the standards, was not explicitly linked to the standards, and so, that was eliminated. And the other two, to be fully transparent, the decision kept me up a few nights and went back and forth for about a month or so before we arrived at the final recommendation. And so, as a product of Newark Public Schools, I take the work that I do seriously, not just professionally, but on a personal level, because I was the student sitting in these seats. And so, I wanted to be sure that the program that was recommended, that is likely to be around for a decade, 'cause that's how old our current middle school program is, was one that could grow as the city was growing and expanding its program. And so, with that, I announce and make the final recommendation that we move to adopt a program called IQuest. That's an acronym that stands for Investigating and Questioning Our World Through Science and Technology. IQuest is a phenomenon-based middle school program that is at the center of what happens in every unit in IQuest, and it encompasses the three dimensions of our standards, those disciplinary core ideas, the cross-cutting concepts, and the science and engineering practices. And so, IQuest was developed over the course of 10 years, the same body of work, a framework for K-12 science education that informed the standards, is the same research base that informed the development of IQuest. Actually, two of its developers were writers of the framework and of the standards. It was field-tested in a range of public schools, in urban, suburban, largely in Chicago public schools, also, I believe, Detroit public schools also, so demographics very similar to our own. And it's actually been piloted in Newark to some degree for about the past three years. And so, that is our recommendation. What the IQuest experience is all about is really starting off a unit with an anchoring phenomenon, having a driving question that students will work around answering as they encounter other phenomenon, ask more questions, engage in practices, and ultimately, if you remember my visual of the volcano, to the final explanation, ultimately getting there. And so, what's on the screen now are images of actually Newark Public Schools students engaging in the IQuest program. These are some schools that piloted the program this year. We have some students from Brick Peschine, Abington Avenue are also represented here. So, it was a range of schools, and actually having the opportunity to see how our students engage with the program was another one of the things that really moved us to recommend this product for all of our middle school students across the district. And so, I don't know how I am on time, though.
Well, maybe, maybe...
Okay, so, I'm gonna wrap up. So, I had some experiences planned for you guys. Some of you may have noticed when you walked in and sat down that there was a smell, so there were... So there were some fragrance beads that were up there. I was behind the screen spraying air freshener. And so the plan was to take you through a little bit of an experience of how one of the iQuest units starts off. It's a unit that is actually called How Can I Smell Things From a Distance? So I was going to ask you to put on your student hat, go through some of those experiences. But ultimately, it would have just taken you through a small excerpt of what phenomenon-driven instruction and three-dimensional learning felt like and what it would feel like for all of our students should we move forward with the adoption of this program. And I'll leave you, I guess, with a quote. This is from a sixth-grade teacher in one of our schools. "I enjoy watching and listening to my students engage in scientific discussions driven by natural phenomenon presented by iQuest. The students developed awesome questions to further their learning around the phenomena and investigations. Students engaged in the three strands of NGSS. My class was full of critical thinkers who were able to construct the scientific principles on their own and add to the driving question board. And if this is what's happening in all of our middle school students, we will certainly be preparing students for success in high school, in college, in career, and beyond." And that is my goal. That's why I do the work that I do, and that's why I hope to continue to do it, especially as I was actually the last graduating class under local control. And so to be in this position as we begin to transition back is something that I would have never imagined, and I look forward to helping build a Newark science legacy again.
Thank you so very, very much. Ivory, Ms. Williams, before you go, first of all, would you introduce Bethany and your team?
So my vast team, Ms. Bethany Davis, please stand up.
There she is. She's doing all this for two people.
Yes, Bethany joins us in December. Doubling the capacity definitely helped prepare us for what we're about to launch for next year, and there's an opening now in the Office of Science. So if anyone in the room is interested in making Newark an urban center for STEM education, if you're qualified, apply or send a reference.
All right. Donna's ready. Look at her. So first of all, thank you very much, by the way, for your extraordinary presentation, as well as your poise and grace. So, well done, well done. All right, that's over, back to you.
Mr. Surf, can you just reach out to Mr. Zuckerberg and fill that budget gap?
Yeah, okay, you got it. I'm on the phone right now, Donna.
Now, our next, our next part of the superintendent report is the Ms. Wilson, the cap.
Hey, good afternoon, Chair. I can't top Ivory's incendiary presentation, but as the business administrator, I'm glad we did not have to call the fire department. We do have a number of caps and audit presentations this evening. I'm going to start with, there are actually two. There is the legal department's audit, which was presented on the cost of legal services. The presentation was made at the board meeting, along with the corrective action plan that has been put in place to correct some of the issues raised in the audit. There was also a special education audit of 192, 193, which were public and actually private school payments made. We do not have a corrective action plan this evening, but the audit, we do? I'm catching up. I'm on vacation and just back this evening for this meeting. Is the cap on the agenda, Mr. Bobadilla? Oh, I'm hearing yes. So we have, oh, she doesn't have to, Ivory, don't be upset. All the best science projects go awry sometimes. So we have both items to be presented. I will open it up to the board if there are any questions. It is my understanding that both were presented at the business meeting. Any questions?
Any board members' questions?
Nope.
No.
Good. Hearing none, it is expected that the board will vote to accept the audit and also accept the corrective action plans as being presented. As you know, both the cap and the audits will be put on the district's website publicly.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
The Chair.
Next order of business is public participation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. As a reminder, time limits for all speakers will be enforced. There's no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. Speakers are required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting is limited to one hour and 30 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that are not permitted include, but are limited to, naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meetings, or inciting others to do so. Public participation of these meetings is intended to allow the individual members of the public the opportunity to address the board and administration on issues of public concern, not as a forum for two-way dialogue with the board members or district officials. The superintendent or designee or the chair may respond to questions either at the end of the session, or responses may be provided at a later time. The superintendent or chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any individual's speaking privilege if the comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board members or district officials, repetitive and truculent speech, or disregarding rules decorum are not tolerated and may subject the individual to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the meeting may be adjourned.
First speaker, Ray T. Small? Not appearing. Jamaris? Not here, not appearing. Christopher Kennick? Can you turn my mic up? I can't hear myself.
Hi, my name is Chris Kennick. I live at One Beaumont Place in Newark, New Jersey. I'm here today to speak to the board about a number of issues. I was happy to hear that the Transparency Committee is opening up. It's been a while, but it's nice to see some progress on that. I was very happy to hear that the final report on the class size and composition was accepted by the board, and I hope that, you know, some real movement on that issue occurs. I look forward to that being made available on the NPS website. Now, just for future reference, when you're trying to put out a chemical fire, smothering is the preferred option, just for reference. I'm only a math teacher, but I did learn that one in high school. With that in mind, I did think the science presentation was tremendous. I really do think that we're doing big things in the district regarding science education. All right, all of that said and done, down to brass tacks. Mr. Surf, repeatedly, you have made it clear that you would like everybody to be data-minded, and rather than to have opinions, to have as many facts as possible. So time and time again, I have requested a comprehensive listing of where special needs students are being distributed throughout the district, including to which charter schools and in what numbers. Obviously, disaggregated statistics so that individual students' information are never compromised. That data will be crucial in understanding why it is that charter schools enroll the same percentage special needs, the same percentage special needs, as magnet schools in the district that often have entrance exams allowed by law. I'm confused. If it is a random lottery, how is it that they're matching data from schools that have mandatory entrance exams? I don't understand that. I don't understand. And I would like, I would like to have the data in full so that I could have an informed opinion on that, but every time that I have asked for it, I have not received anything, not even a response to that matter. So next step is, of course, an Oprah request, and we will be going with that. Next. And finally, because I'm going to run out of time, August 28th return for staff members is disrespectful and unacceptable. I don't know where you arrived at that decision. I'm not sure whether you're aware. I am a 10-month employee. That is what my contract stipulates. I am now bridging 10 and a half months of pay periods, and so I would like to understand why that is and for you to make the necessary accommodations. I thank you, Mr. Surf, and the board.
Hey, hey. Good evening, everyone. Diane Hayes, 354 Park Avenue in Newark. And I was a little bit upset before I came here. Now I'm really upset. Look me at this dynamic building. To the board, I'm speaking on behalf of one of Newark Public Schools' underserved students, diagnosed autistic, delayed speech, delayed learning, and asthmatic, but not permitted to attend JFK. He is interested in art, but Arts High's middle school did not have a support system for him. Forced to attend Louise Z. Spencer, after graduating, he was again denied school choice. The current deputy director of special education was adamant that he could be properly educated in either Central High or American History High. And it was at that time that the principal at Central High had written a scathing letter stating that Central was out of compliance in the autism program, and they lacked programs and services for special needs students. When his mother visited both schools, it was employees at Central who made statements that would concern any parent. With no other options, his mother enrolled him in American History. American History lacks a decent facility, the restrooms are deplorable, and this student often complains that there's no tissue in the restrooms. There are no life skills classes, no transition classes, and no vocational training. There were months when this student did not take gym because there was no gym teacher. He could not take art classes because the art teacher was overwhelmed by the number of students. His speech therapy is limited because there's no permanent speech therapist. There are eight students in his class with two working computers. The router disappeared, so there were no working computers. Case management is virtually nonexistent, and his teacher is often required to provide social work services. His mother is concerned about her son's safety and the fact that he is aging out of the public school system without the skills he needs to succeed. The principal at American History understands his mother's concerns, but he does not control the district's funds. His mother has emailed several assistant superintendents, the previous executive director of special education, the current deputy director of special education, program specialists and autism specialists located at Two Cedar Street, but none of these people have responded. At the board meeting in June 2016, his mother was introduced to Newark Public Schools' chief academic officer. It has been exactly one year since the chief academic officer took her contact information and assured her that he would contact her. And so now he too has been added to the list of administrators who have not responded. Each school day, as this student is bused from North 13th Street to American History, he passes several newly constructed schools. They're all brand-new charter schools, schools that have everything that his school lacks. And yes, it's personal, and his mother is too upset to even stand here and speak. But no longer will she seek assistance from administrators who have clearly demonstrated that they just do not care. And finally, I will close by saying that when so many people here speak passionately about our children in all public schools, they're fighting for this student as well. And, Mr. Chair, I'm asking you to please make sure that Newark Public Schools gives American History High its fair share of resources, because this student just does not have enough time to waste. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for fighting for our students. Thank you.
Ms. Hayes, Ms. Hayes, can you come, is the parent here? Is the parent here? Is Mr. Gregory outside? So let me, can you just listen to me for one second? If you can go outside right now with Mr. Haggerty and Mr. Gregory, and then at the end of the meeting, I'll give you my phone number so you can follow up with me. But right now, we just ask you, you go outside with them for them to handle this situation. Mr. Gregory and Mr. Haggerty. Next speaker, Mike Olivino? No, I'm sorry, Ms., we messed up. They just informed me we messed up. Mr. Olivino, supposed to go first because he's representing the union.
Oh, okay. I'll wait. I appreciate the correction. Michael Olivino, 91 Warren Street Department, 1A Nutley, New Jersey, 07110. It's been a while since I've been before the board. I grew a beard since last time, probably. I'm speaking on behalf of the Newark Teachers Union. Again, I want to congratulate, I don't think he's here anymore, Principal Petty on an awesome Oliver Street School. And also, I want to echo the sentiments of fond farewell of Dr. Caleb Perkins, who has done a phenomenal job stewarding and shepherding the social studies, Department of Social Studies. I don't want to speak too fondly about him because, you know, Robert Gregory was the guy who started it, and I don't want Robert to get jealousy in your absence. And good luck with your grunge band. He's going back to Seattle. Congratulations. Again, the science push initiative, I think, is very important. I was very concerned in the era of Park that we would lose the sciences, and to see that the district is making a concerted effort to push the sciences is absolutely heartening. And finally, Chair Marquis, I echo your sentiment about getting the most out of every second, and that's what I'm here to talk about tonight, 345,600 seconds, which is the school calendar. As you guys know, NPS has recently released their calendar, and that's what I'm on behalf of our membership here to talk about. First, I want to clarify, the Newark Teachers Union and NPS have recently resolved contract, and on my part, I can honestly say that throughout the contract negotiations, throughout the ups and downs, overall, I think we garnered a great deal of goodwill between the two teams, and I see the reason, and I just want to commend you. I think while there is much to criticize about the contract, there are, the nature of a contract is the compromise. However, I think the element that is important to note is that we do not negotiate the calendar. Unfortunately, that still remains the element of the administration to control. That being said, I'm also not here to talk about the legal aspects of what the courts will resolve and where that goes and all that. That's not what I'm here to talk about. What I'm here to talk about is a very simple concept of what is possible, what could be done, and what should be done in many aspects. That being said, again, I've learned to be a man of data. We decided to roll out a survey to see the impact that members would have, because again, if by and large, members felt no compunction to be concerned about the calendar, then this would not be an issue for us. However, in the day and a half that we rolled out the survey, we received over 1,200 responses, in fact, about 60 of them just since I've been here tonight. And unfortunately, the vast majority of them demonstrate that there is an impact to our membership, but more importantly, to the employees. And it's really as an employee that I'm speaking tonight, because I've been a teacher for 20 years in the district. Throughout my tenure as secretary treasurer and as lead negotiator, it was my desire to never leave the classroom. So this is as much a personal experience as it is on behalf of the union. We asked some very simple questions, and I just wanted to share some of the responses. So of the respondents, 87.2% said that they were a little upset about the summer break being cut short. 84% of the respondents said that they were negatively impacted by the short notice. And if they said no, they weren't impacted, then we took that data as well. So there was about 150 respondents who said that they were not impacted. Some of the questions that we asked them, and I think that this really drives home the human element of the calendar change and the short notice. Childcare issues, for the most part, that was the number-one response. 44.3% of the respondents were concerned with childcare issues. How are they going to manage being in school those days when their students, their children, rather, don't start next? Vacation issues, people who had previously planned vacations. Unfortunately, maybe they had insurance and they were going to cancel them, and that's acceptable, but again, they are changing... acceptable, but again, they are changing. That's that last week of vacation. Some teachers actually said that they're burning, they're concerned that they're going to be burning a personal day, and unfortunately, also missing valuable professional development. Frontloading the professional development, when we negotiated the contract, I thought was an absolute, from a teacher's standpoint, I thought was an incredible idea. I felt that the district rolls out a great deal of initiatives, evaluations are starting sooner, the sooner that we can get valid professional development, some of the great stuff that Caleb Perkins put out, of course, the sooner that we can get this valid professional development out to staff and to teachers in the beginning of the year would have a positive impact on the evaluation. We agreed with that 150%. That wasn't even an issue in negotiations. But unfortunately, if teachers are going to use personal days to miss because they're using that time because they have vacations, they're going to miss out on that valuable PD. And our concern from the union's standpoint is what impact that might have on the evaluations and what they're missing. We actually had several teachers respond that that's the week, and again, I didn't consider it, but that's the week that most teens are going off to college. Parents are trucking their kids off to college. So these, the 1,235 respondents represents a little over a third of membership, and more importantly, the employees who are significantly impacted by this. And again, this isn't about what is legally or actually, contractually, you know, possible. This is just about the short notice rollout of the calendar. Our teachers this year have weathered another contract freeze, but fortunately, they have a contract now, but they also weathered a change in benefits, change in prescription plan, and wonderfully, they look forward to that summer for that recharge. And a couple people actually wrote in, they look forward to summer because that's when they recharge. So this, to me, unfortunately, was just a dramatic last-minute shift that just made the end of the school year, going off to the summer with a contract, to be something that became a thorn in many of our members' sides, and unfortunately, employees as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So again, the last thing that I just wanted to say was that on behalf of the membership, but more importantly, as an employee, I asked the district to reconsider this and have a conversation with us about it. And again, I'm not a man of vitriol or rhetoric, and I thank you for the opportunity to present this.
Thank you.
So, Mike, first of all, I want to thank you for your, I want to thank you, I'm going out of order, if the chair will forgive me. I want to thank you for your civil and appropriate presentation. We have written you today and said we're happy to meet and discuss this issue. There's a whole other side to this in terms of focusing on the students and the student calendar and learning, which I won't trouble you with today, but I really want to tell you that you presented in an incredibly professional, appropriate, and collegial way. And even though we may not get to rest on this one, I respect the stability of our discourse. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yolanda Johnson.
Yolanda Johnson, 278 Goldsmith. I am angry. I came to this mic every single board meeting except one throughout the whole entire school year, and nothing has changed. You allow Christopher Surf to come into this district and skate through here without giving us no superintendent report at each board meeting. At each board meeting. This is the last board meeting for the school year, and I still don't know, the community still don't know, the people still don't know, how many students were retained for this school year? How many students are going to be attending summer school? It might not be important to him, and it might not be important to you guys, but it's important to us. This is our community that we're talking about. These are our children that's dying here on the streets that we're talking about. This is where we have to live. He doesn't have to live here. He doesn't have to worry about children not being educated, busting his car windows out or breaking into his house. That's our issue. Next. I signed up for the transparency committee. At the last, at the board member retreat, Board President Lewis said that my application wasn't submitted. Board Member Kim Gaddy verified that my application is there, it's sent via email. Now, I went to where you said for us to go in this meeting, Board President Lewis, to fill out the application, and read, it says, and read means stop, it says, "Do not submit another application if you've already submitted one." I have submitted one. So now I need to know, what do I do now? Because I know for a fact that I submitted one, I have proof, but you stated at the board retreat that I did not submit one. Lastly, what is going on with these community schools? Why is it so hard for us to discuss the funding and the operations of the community schools? We have not heard anything since December 1st, 2015, when there was a press conference talking about the $100,000 that was allocated for the implementation and planning and the additional $10 million. That's all I have to say.
Veronica Branch. Not here. Denise Cole.
My name is Denise Cole, 2 Care Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. I came because I submitted an Oprah request. At the last month's board meeting, I asked the board chair where they're going to follow the board policies. So I read the policy that I researched last month, and the board looked at it and they had a discussion. So I went to the board retreat, and there was NJEA training on everything. And then I opened it, and Charlotte sent me the response back. It says, deny, well, I asked, "Please provide any documentation changes to the file number 911, 912, 913, 914, the Newark Public School Series 900 bylaws of the board." Charlotte typed, "Deny, no response, documentation. Please be advised that the above referent policies on the district website are the current policies seen attached." So the current policies she attached was the policies that I read before the board. That board member chair, and I asked the board to acknowledge this meeting, "Are you all, since we're going to local control, going to follow policy?" Now, the policy says that board chairs cannot appoint committee chairs. The board chair and the superintendent, because we're under local control, can put together the five committees and they can change the names. And once they put the five committees together, the board's chair can authorize and appoint the members to those committees. But once those members are appointed, the members in that committee must choose the chair. Why? Because when you look at the case law behind it and the reason why the bylaws exist is so that no political party can have pull over everything. It must be set up so that it stays a bipartisan effort. And that's what the bylaws exist for. So she submitted back to me 911, 912, 913, 914, 99130, the committee bylaws. I also want to note that she also stated at the business meeting, when I brought forth that I was correct that those bylaws exist the way they are written, the only thing her and the superintendent updated was the legal notification at the bottom where it says, "The superintendent acknowledged these bylaws," and blah, 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 blah. So I come today because we are moving to local control. The governor was on NJEA and said, "The reason why the state of New Jersey is in the problem is in because we're not following policy." And he's running based on policy following. So is Newark Public School Board going to continue to ignore the policy, or are we going to recognize today at the board meeting that the bylaws exist, the policy exists, and we will begin to be a governing body that follows the policies? I ask for the acknowledgement today at the board meeting-
Thank you.
-so that the community can understand what it is that this board is going to follow.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Mr. Jones?
And Mr. Chairperson, you can be respectful, because I've always been respectful of you.
Your time is up.
Yeah, my time might be up, but you let others run over. You pick and choose who you want to run over. Now, you need to recognize there's a bylaw policy, are you going to follow it or not? And the community needs to look at that. If you're going to support him, then support following policies if we're going back to local control. Let's not ignore it, because that's why we're in the state that we are in now. My time is up when I get ready for it to be up.
Lucius Jones, is the mic on? Lucius Jones, 224 Richard Luterris. I hope the clock has been set accordingly. Thank you very much. I had the honor today of attending my middle daughter, 18-years-old Diamond, graduation today. She graduated from University High School. And she received certificates from Congressman Payne and honoring her, her work in the community, as well as recognition from the Thurgood Marshall Law Program at University High School. Diamond will be attending William Patterson College, pursuing law. My concern kind of goes back to thanking everyone, meaning this village, for the work that we put in to make today possible, not just for Diamond, but for every child at university and for every child that is graduating in the Newark, from the Newark Public School this school year. I think that when we measure the success or the failure of a child or student, because I think I prefer to say student, we need to look at proper indicators, and we can't do any of this without the village. You know, I say to the general counsel, to the business administrator, to the security, to the staff and everyone, that when I say, "I had to do it differently this time because my oldest daughter didn't have that quite, didn't have the experience that my, one of my other children have," I think that this community and the village really stepped up and made a difference. And I wanted to give gratitude to the folks, because when she walked off that stage and she was singing a gospel song on the stage, that ring bells and ringed volume to me. Because so much money has been spent from K to 12 for that quality education. We talk about money. You know, but what depressed me was Diamond's mood. And I said, "Diamond, what is your problem?" She said, "Daddy..." A lot of the kids got up at the mic and they said they were considered to be the roughest crowd of students in the history of, AKA, University High School. And I think since they were the first students that came from the enrollment process, said a lot about what the enrollment process does to students. When you send students to magnet schools or schools of, and you don't bring the resources in to support them. You know, I have another daughter at Arts High School, and I mean it to this extent. I've said something about books. I don't see the books. Where are the books? The books are disappearing. I see a kid sitting, kid sitting home, and they're writing reports on their iPhone, and they're sending it to the school, to their email address, and then editing it and printing it out, and they only have 16 gigabytes of memory, and their iPhone freezes. I asked the question, where is, that I also stated that I believe that security should be more centralized, that we cannot allow principals who are in a tight situation to make choices between books and teachers, and whether or not they need security radios or they need the proper equipment for students to walk in and out of the building. See, we have to have some type of centralized control over the things that matter, especially when every other entity in the United States and in the world is concerned about safety. I said if kids were to get shooting at a playground and the security had to pick up their phone and call to the front desk, so many kids would lose their life before anyone gets to that playground to help. When we talk about, you know, Mr. Surf, I want you to hear me loud and clear, because I met you and your wife, and I was happy to meet your wife, but I want to talk to you deeply, it's because we've had eight years, today represents eight years of what we consider reform, not transforming the school, but reforming the schools. And I also look at the fact that said, in these last two years, we talk about performance. Where is the performance? I was on the phone this week with Nora Peak from Bergen County Superintendent's office, and I could hear the great talk about what the expectations in Bergen County is as it relates to kids. But I don't hear that great talk when we come down, when we say, "What's best for kids based on data." Kids are leaving, hold up, kids are leaving Newark, and they're headed to Morgan, and then they're headed to Morgan on one train headed south and coming back six months later on the other train headed north, because they can't sustain themselves, whether they're in charter or public, because it doesn't make a difference when they get to the university. The schools are saying they're all from Newark. Doesn't make a difference whether they came from charter or public. They're not holding their ground when they get into the university.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I'm closing, Mr. Chair. I want to, I just want to close with saying to, 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 my daughter has to take the placement at William Patterson. It's a true reflection, it's going to be a true reflection on me and for our community to determine what she really learned in Newark Public School based on what, how she performed when she takes that placement test. So let's talk about that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker, Vanez Ropa. Not appearing. Ms. Maureen Robinson.
Maureen Robinson, 428 Doyle Street, Elizabeth, New Jersey, special education teacher, Central High Schools. I'm the one lone teacher still standing advocating for students and teachers. For as long as I live and I see and experience corruption, I'm going to speak out about it, irrespective of where it is or who the perpetrators are, because it's hurtful, condescending, and degrading. There still lies among us some of the most hateful, mean-spirited, and vindictive black administrators in the district, especially at Central High School. If they like you and you are one of their favorites, you will receive a highly effective evaluation. If you feel that you have gone above and beyond the call of duty and deserve a highly effective evaluation, moreover, perchance you make the proverbial mistake of questioning certain administrators about the possibility of receiving a highly effective evaluation. You will be told, "There's too much paperwork to do when you give a teacher a highly effective evaluation." There are few teachers at Central High School who are favorites and who have received highly effective evaluations who don't do anything. They have extensive absences, but because they are favored- They have extensive absences, but because they are favorite daughters and are sons of the administrators, he or she will receive a highly effective rating on their evaluations. I will be submitting a comprehensive report to the superintendent containing the names and incidents that I know about that have been swept under the rug and have not been reported. If the administrator doesn't like you and or feel as though you have crossed him or her in some manner, your evaluation will be downgraded in retaliation for whatever the administrator perceived as the infraction. To date, I have not received an evaluation this year. This corruption, nepotism and cronyism need to cease. Change is inevitable. On May seventeenth, one of Central High School's favorite basketball players threatened to punch me in my effing face. He was suspended for a few days and a meeting was arranged with his father. During the meeting, his father commenced to disrespect me in front of his son by cursing me out. I walked out of the meeting and filed harassment charges against him and his son. On the lighter side, and I'm almost done, Reed forty-four is phenomenal. My students demonstrated marked growth and improvement in just three months. Mrs. Erica, the trainer, was shocked and informed me that it usually takes six months for students to demonstrate the amount of growth and improvement that my students demonstrated in just three months. I replied, "Just think where they would be if I had the program in the beginning of the school year two thousand seventeen."
Next speaker, Deborah Smith Gregory. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Gregory.
Deborah Smith Gregory. I serve as the President of the Newark Branch N double A C P, four five four Washington Street, Newark. And I have a copy of my letter to the board so that you can each have a copy. I did not email it, but I wanted you each to have a copy. As the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen year draws to an end, we have the following questions. When will the board release the findings of the disparity study conducted by Holt and Associates, scheduled to be completed by June thirtieth, twenty seventeen? And the expanding of grant funding for the Contract for Reading Intervention Program to the entire district from July one, twenty fifteen to June thirtieth at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually? What evaluation of effectiveness was used for assessment? And is there an annual report submitted by the district that gives a comprehensive look at the district regarding the budget partnerships such as the one Victoria today? I'm sure that there are others, the successes and the challenges. Prior to current Superintendent Surf, the former superintendent never released any such report or if it was, it was not widely circulated. And now, it's been about five years that there has been no major annual report. And most corporations do have some type of annual report to look at what worked, what didn't work, to allow the community and its employees and everyone to know what is up with the district. For example, if chronic absenteeism affects fifty-nine percent of our pre-K in high school, what steps have been taken to address this issue according to their findings, which also states that the absenteeism also affects the test scores? How is the Office of Attendance now staffed if there are no more attendance officers at the schools? As the Newark Public Schools head toward local control, we must be careful not to set ourselves up as the reasons why there is constant instability among building leaders, that there is poor teacher morale, that there is poor student attendance and scarce resources in our schools. Ultimately, the Board of Education, and I come to speak to the board and not the superintendent, the Board of Education is responsible. We want to be in control of our public schools, but we need to know what is being given back, what is the condition? And lastly, what is the timeline for the transparency and the transition committees? That information is needed so that we can know how on target we are for return to local control. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Darren Martin. Not appearing. Joanne Miller.
Joanne Miller, forty-three, Head and Terrace, Newark, New Jersey. I am speaking as a parent right now, guardian of my grandson. I have a passion for the children in the city of Newark and making sure that they receive a quality education. I need to know, what is the job description for a math coach? Somebody needs to tell me. I've asked that question to administration at Belmont Runyon. No reply. But when a math coach goes into the cafeteria and chooses to sweep the floor while the children are eating, that's unacceptable. Our children are the cause of all of us being here, all of us. And we must make sure they receive quality education and quality lunch. What would give a math teacher the right to sweep the floor while the children are eating? You have three custodians sitting on the side saying, "We're waiting for the children to stop eating and go outside so we can clean." But this math coach insists that it's her right. So when I brought it to her attention, she says, "I don't give a dime if you tell so." Okay, okay. Be careful what you ask for, sister. I was appalled. But what really upset me, as a community school, the principal says, "Leave it alone. Leave it alone." You allow this? She has a job as a math coach. Educate our children. Don't sweep the floor while they're eating, dust flying everywhere. Give me a break. Come on now. So I am upset about that and the fact that a principal would allow it. When you have a child that's having a moment, she doesn't deal with that. Now, you're the cafeteria teacher for this period. You should be dealing with that child that's having that moment, acting out. I dealt with the child, not the teacher that was in there. But the principal says, "You can't go back into that cafeteria any longer." I was there because my grandson came home telling me a number of boys are bullying him. That's why I went there and volunteered. I could have been working, substituting, but I chose to see just what was going on. Yes, I found it, but it fell on deaf ears. Nothing was done. I think that this principal at Belmont Runyon has no control over what's going on in that school. We gotta, we have a security guard that walks around with a child, holding a child's hand all day. The child is not in the classroom receiving instructions, walking around with a guard because they don't have control. The school is totally out of control. Principal vice and both vice principals need to be removed. Because there's no control there with those children. And I've heard not only the children, I've heard the staff say, "There's no control in this building. Something needs to be done." Can I leave you with this? As a substitute teacher, I wasn't wanted there anymore. That's okay. But substitutes have our people too, and we have rights just like you. So I just wanna let you know that substitutes should not be looked down upon. Now, I'm wearing the hat of a substitute. All the years I've been in the district substituting, we have rights just like you. So please understand that substitutes must not be looked down upon, frowned on, subservents. You're just a sub. You're nobody. And you must try and help the administration understand that they've got to help the children. The students understand that they must respect them. But when they don't see administration respecting substitutes, what do you expect from the children? So all I can say to you, Mr. Surf, is tell me the description of a, of a math coach. Give me her job description. Does it entitle her to sweep the floor and get paid for sweeping the floor? I need to know that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next speaker, Ms. Kathleen Witcher.
Kathleen Witcher.
Please turn her mic on.
Eighty Johnson Avenue. I'm representing the South Side Malcolm X Shabazz High School Alumni Association. And want to ask for well wishes and prayers. The Presidential Band Director of the school, Mr. Hassan Williams, had emergency surgery over the weekend and so he's in recovery. Also, would like to say that there are two new officers in the PTA. We will have a new region director, Natalia Suarez. I'm sure she will be coming to some of the meetings. And our new county council president for Essex County is Ms. Karen Diggs, a product of the Newark Schools. Carrying that further, there will be summer training institute for all PTA leaders and officers. And you can consult the website, newjerseypta.org for that information. Want to say that the students are well informed and at Malcolm X Shabazz High School are requesting to have what was discussed and presented here this evening. That's the biomed labs and also the return of robotics to the school. Of course, at some point, not long ago, we did receive awards for our robotics team. So we anticipate a short window on the return of robotics as well as other courses. We have some difficulty getting our culinary arts lab going. We want to state for the record that we would like to see the culinary arts room that we had previously occupied in the building to have the appliances installed until a new lab is up and running. We welcome cosmetology that should be opening up according to our administrators here in September. A continuation of the videography studies and lab at the school. But we cite that there are major repairs that are due to the auto shop and you'll be hearing that presented in a few minutes. Also want to say that in terms of one Newark, it has failed us completely and other speakers have mentioned it. Personally speaking, for one of my relatives, when she attempted to enroll her daughter for the fall, she was directed to two schools only and told that there were no other openings. And so I would ask the question, if we are to obey the federal guide that was given, our children should be able to go to the neighborhood schools and not be sent to two of the demanded schools from one Newark and Rose. And I would like to ask the question, I did not get an answer before, what will be the location of the Metz Academy? I'm told that it will be replacing the merit prep facility and whether or not students will be transported from out of town to that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witcher. Next speaker, Jaclyn Bostic Calder.
My name is Jaclyn Bostic Calder. I live at eighty Johnson Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, oh seven one oh eight. And I'm alumni of South Side slash Malcolm X Shabazz. And I'm here to talk about the auto body that our children are going to have. There's been a car that's been in there for a minute. That means a long time. There's oil on the floor that's been in there a minute that's on the floor and in the building. There's asbestos that's there that's been there a minute. And you need to go see, clean this up because you gotta keep people accountable. Because if the director of facilities was doing their job, they'd know this, they would have knew this was in there. And it's a matter where if somebody, a student, get mad or whatever and strike that match, that mess up the whole area. And I understand somebody did it, but they caught it in time. Our children once promised this and they're gonna get this. I don't care how you do it, they're gonna get this. I was at a senior meeting and the health department, I knew one of the ladies, she came in. She gave me, we start talking and I asked questions. So I'm letting you know, I'm telling you, you don't have to guess, I'm telling you. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to the Board of Health. They open at eight thirty. I'm gonna get them, get their Dunkin' Donuts coffee and their donuts. And they talk about the queen, queen sugar. But nine o'clock, I'm gonna knock on that door and I'm gonna have the Board of Health come into Shabazz. If you get fined, so be it. I don't care because you know what? It wouldn't be in Montclair. It wouldn't be in Bergen County. It wouldn't be in Short Hills or Melbourne. It wouldn't be down in South Jersey. I don't care if they care or not, but y'all gonna do something for these children. You wonder why they on the street? Because you don't give them their choice. That was their choice. You always up here talking about what y'all going to do for the kids. You never ask the children what they want. Well, y'all gonna fix that automatic. Y'all gonna fix that. And I definitely will be at the Board of Health. I'm letting you know I'm going to the Board of Health.
Thank you, Ms. Calder. I meant, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Board Chair.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Ms. Bostic Calder, thank you for your comments. The oil at Shabazz was cleaned up approximately three weeks ago when I was informed that it existed. We are in the process of removing the car from the facility. I've been away for a week, so I'm not quite sure if it's been done yet, but just so you know, it's been cleaned up.
Jalisa Vasquez. Welcome back, Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening. Yes, long time, but I'm back. Good evening, board members in the community. I'm happy to be back. I just wanted to say I have two students that are be graduating from Candace Street. I did the one Newark enrollment. We have to get rid of this. Because I tried it online, it was not working. I called and they said, "Go down to West Kenny, no problem." I go down there, do the application. Now it stays on the application. If your child has an IP, I checked it. I let the lady know that my, both my kids have an IP. I do not want them to attend. I do not want them to attend the same high school. My daughter, they said, if you want her to go to arts high, put that as your number one school, exactly what I did. She did everything she needed to do for Ice High School. I took her for the process. When I received the letters back, both my childs landed at Banjar Academy of Arts. Stated that when you go to this One Newark enrollment, they have a booklet, they tell you, look through these high school, pick whatever high school you want, but they don't let you know that in back of the book, they have the programs, which high school has what? Not all high school has RCI, RCO, LDM, or LDS, different highs. So I sat there and they didn't explain that to me. So my daughter, she's right there, she wanted to attend art high school, and I went to the Newark Board of Ed. I spoke to Mr. Matthews, said, your daughter did great at arts high school, they would have took her, but they don't have that LDS program. She could have told me that when I went down to West Kenning, so now she's stuck next year in September at Banjar. But that's, but, and I said, I have no problem because my daughter's at Banjar right now. She's going to graduate on Thursday out of that school. She's getting ready to go. I said, I have no problem, but that's where my daughter wanted to go. And she must have said about that, and I couldn't do nothing about it. That's, this One Newark enrollment, you have to get rid of that. That is simple and plain. This is all my program. I applied for two of my kids, did the process online and everything. I called back, I said, I received no letter. I know my kid's supposed to go to 13th Avenue School. The lady said, I'm going to put you on the waiting list. I do not see your application. Really? So she's telling me about the program they have from three to six. No, I need academics morning. And I told her, I'm going to tell you when summer school starts and June 10th. So, and she's like, well, you didn't save whatever number you need to save. I said, I ain't need to because I know what I did. So now my, both my kids, they sitting on a waiting list. That's ridiculous. We should go back to pen and paper and photocopies. Come on now. The special ed programs are not working. We need to do something better about that because we got kids now in high school that they're graduating senior year, and they still can't read and write.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
They still can't read and write. So we let our children graduate high school, probably what a kindergarten level, first grade reading level, and what they're going to do afterwards? Nothing, because you're not teaching our kids. The special ed program is not working. We need to do something about that. That's why we have all this violence, because the education in Newark is not working. We need to get with the program, people. Come on.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. Next speaker, Carl Gonzalez. No? Next speaker, Michelle Capisio. Next speaker, Pam Arenas. Next speaker, Linda Dorf. Next speaker, Sheila Montague. Next speaker, Anita Atkinson? Yes. Oh, there she is. We have one, we have one. We have one. All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, superintendent, board, staff, everyone here. My name's Anita Atkinson, and I live 4469 Elizabeth Avenue here in the city of Newark. I'm here as a transparent person. So when I speak, I speak on behalf of the NTU as a rep, most of all, students. I just want to say that I remember as a little girl, and as kids coming up in Newark public schools, there was always a lot of days out. I was excited because I was a kid, but the main thing was, when I was out of school, my mother knew it, and someone was always there to make sure that the doors were open for me to come inside. That was back in two years ago. However, and saying that, this is 2017. I looked at the calendar. I am not fighting August 28th, but I have a discrepancy with all the extra half-days and remembering what's going to happen to our children. Where are they going to go? We want to take our society and we say we want to make it better, but our parents have to work, maybe a one single family, grandma, whoever. We're not going to talk about the behaviors because we see it in the school, but we want to say, what's going to happen when all these days that we have extra, what, four to six extra days on top of having 15 days out of school in November? And still, and I do understand the professional development, but I do want to thank you for allowing us to get the raise. So therefore, that should already be counted for and not taken away from our kids with these half-days, if you get what I'm talking about. So it's already counted for. If you love your job and you passionate, we don't need those extra half-days. Let's do something that we haven't done in a very long time, and that's think about the children. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson.
Roberto Cabanas, Sylvan Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. Last week, when I attended the business board meeting on Tuesday, June 17th, I posed two questions to the school board. One was, why did it take eight months to form the transparency committee dating back to the initial vote on October 2016? And then, when the school board finally was ready to proceed with the rollout to the district, the district pulled back on the implementation for unknown reasons. My second question was, why was board member Kim Gaddy appointed to lead the collection of applications when board member Kim Gaddy was one of two members that voted against the formation of the transparency committee? Kim Gaddy, at that present time, responded to me at the piece where they respond back to the community and said she did not vote against forming the transparency committee on October 24th, 2016. The papers you have in front of you, if you have them in front of you at this time, I've produced a voting record for the public school board meeting on October 24th, 2016, when the school board voted to form the transparency committee. You will see that board member Gaddy and board member Padilla were in fact the only two no votes. I have also included a letter that was emailed to New Jersey State Commissioner Harrington on behalf of the Newark Board of Education regarding the school board vote on the transparency committee, and I'd like to read an excerpt. The October 24th resolution reflects the conversations that the board and the district were already engaged in, the state district superintendent Surf and his chief of staff have engaged in preliminary discussions with the board chair and vice chair about activating the transparency committee, a committee that superintendent Surf agreed to form in school year 2015-2016 but never activated, with an initial charge to examine enrollment in the district and make recommendations. These preliminary discussions had progressed to discussion of potential committee composition with community stakeholders and a discussion of a neutral committee chair. The superintendent has now withdrawn from the conversations about the transparency committee after having publicly expressed to the board and the larger community that he would be collaborative and transparent regarding enrollment. State district superintendent Surf, as recently as the October 24th, 2016 regular board meeting, after the board vote, affirming the resolution supporting a committee on placement and enrollment, publicly stated that he would be collaborative on the issue of enrollment. The withdrawal from the discussions about activating the transparency committee with stakeholder participation amounts to a clear case of bait and switch. Those most affected, the parents, the students, are the stakeholders that this board agrees must be full participants in the transparency committee, which is then charged with making the recommendations regarding enrollment. That the state superintendent has engaged in bait and switch is apparent. The district has expressed the board and the vice chair willingness to make some concessions on the enrollment process, but basically, just to have this conversation, we've had eight months to come up with the alternative to One Newark. Board members who just got here, you need to pay attention. We just had about 20 parents complaining about the One Newark enrollment. We had a mass movement five years ago that continues to go on about enrollment because these, we've tried to ask questions about the algorithm. We have board members that are voting on things, don't even know what they're voting on. How are we supposed to have confidence in local control when people are not even paying attention to what they're voting on?
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Cabanas. Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Wilamina Holder.
My last ask is for the unity people to please pay attention and give us an enrollment process that puts students first.
Ms. Wilamina Holder, thank you.
First, I'd like to bring something to the board's attention. Before I signed up, I signed up Lyndon Brown. Is his name on that list? And I think I sent an email to all of you to let you know that we are very suspicious of the process. I signed up online twice. One time, we were both not on the list. Now I don't see him on the list, and I signed up from my computer, and I wish I had my laptop. Send it to you before I signed up myself. There's a problem, and I think you need to investigate it and give Mr. Brown the chance to speak, because it's unfair that we keep doing this over and over. Wilamina Holder, 152 Midland Place. I wanted to speak about One Newark enrollment and how it does have to be eliminated, and we should have been looking for an alternative. Some of us do have some ideas, and I'm hoping the board will invite us into your space to share our ideas of how we can make an enrollment process that's just and fair and equitable. I believe the charter schools should have their own separate enrollment process. It should not be combined with Newark traditional public schools. I'll tell you, one reason is because we are not an agency, so I thought, for the charter schools. And why I say that is because when our parents and our children have problems, they go to the One Newark enrollment system, and they tell them they cannot solve it there because every charter school is a separate district. Yet, they relied on us, and this is legal talk, they relied on us to choose a school for them and to act in their best interest. Board members, wake up. Get rid of One Newark enrollment and have a separate system for our schools and let them do their own thing, because we are not responsible for the mess they create. The other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is get the numbers of children who have been transferred since the PRC exam back into our schools. At West Side, we have a significant problem with children coming from the Marion Pete Thomas Charter School behind credits, and they're in trouble. They deserve a high-quality education. We can do it, but not without the proper resources. If they were in that school for any length of time, let Marion Pete Thomas in any and every charter clean up their own mess. Do not send children back to us and tell them, if you want to graduate on time, go to West Side, go to Central, go to Weekway, go wherever. You keep them, have them keep their own students in their own schools, and you support them, have them support it. Get out of One Newark enrollment. Algorithms have been known to be biased. There are built-in biases. I've done this research, and the studies show that. I'm just ashamed that we have not terminated that system for it. And I think it's time for all of us to sit ourselves at 224 West Kenney Street, West Kenney Junior High, my old junior high school, and be there every day for those parents this summer and help them get through this horrible process, because it is not equitable, it's not fair, nor is it just. Thank you. Oh, I got time?
Thank you, Ms. Holder.
So the other time is to let Mr. Brown speak, because he signed, I signed him up before I signed myself up.
I got this, Ms. Holder.
You got that?
I got this.
All right, thank you, board chair, Louis.
I just don't, I want everybody, I don't want nobody trying to file ethic charges on me, so I want to go by the Robinson's order. Can I get a motion for Mr. Brown to speak? Well, I just want to add, before we go to the last one.
On favor of adding Mr. Brown to the list?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Brown's added to the list.
We're going to have Denise Crawford.
Good evening. Can I get that mic? Hello? Okay. Good evening. I just want to thank everybody for this trying year, and as usually, I say, thank you for everything that you've done. I told you all last time that I'm going to say I'm 100, because let's keep it 100. I've been trying my best to be respectful and be nice, but folks, it's not being respectful to Denise Crawford. And the only reason, my father gave me this name, and I love my father dearly, and it's just that people want to say that Denise Crawford is a thief and tell my fellow colleagues that I stole some uniforms. So I'm going to have to tell the truth tonight. It was a staff member that stole uniforms. Let's straighten it out. And the principal sat with me and the staff member, and the staff member admitted it. And how can the principal tell them to return it and they don't do it? I mean, what is that? And then, well, if they say I stole it, I can say a staff member, okay? Lawyer, okay? Then also, yes, I will no longer be region director, and I stand here not as region director tonight. I stand here as a person that graduated from Newark Public Schools. All these people in this room practically is the community, and the community has the right to have a voice inside the schools. And now the principals are, not all of them, because we've got some good principals, y'all don't get it twisted, that are trying to push us out. They keep trying to take over the parent organizations. They keep saying that the money that we help raise for our children belong to them. Okay? Valerie Wilson, I know she'll set them straight. Okay, there's money for stuff in this district. It is a shame that people is volunteering that good man from that school, from Weekway, and he's spending his money. Well, guess what? Denise Crawford spends her money too. And we help children. I'm in this for children. I get up every day, tell my children how much I love them, and I tell everybody else's children. I tell board people, I tell parents, I tell whoever. I give people hugs because some of y'all ain't never going to get a hug. So I want people to feel good about what they do. I am sick and tired, and also, there was, what you call that? There was, what was that thing that we had? No, there was, there was something that we had money that was given for autism children, a grant, that's what I'm trying to say. And that same person spent the grant money, and this is why they are calling me a thief, because a spade is a spade. We called them on it, and I've been asking for something to be done. Now you want me to tell the truth? I'm telling it. Please handle the business and stop letting people that really care about children being picked on. I say that's bullying, and you're not running me out of this district, because guess why? I'm here to stay, and I was born and raised here. Thank you.
Ms. Crawford, you've reflected on the record irregularities with district money and district property. Please call my office in the morning, 973-733-8467.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Lyndon Brown, 220 South Sixth Street, Newark, and thank you for...
Good evening, Lyndon Brown, 220 South Sixth Street, Newark, and thank you for adding me to the speakers' list tonight. As we end the 2016-17 school year, I'm just left with a lot of questions, and I think the board members need to ask some more hard pertinent questions. I'm curious about the 2017 graduation rate. What does that look like? How many first-year teachers resigned across the district? How many were terminated? How many face tenure charges? What administrative changes are going to occur in some of our low-performing and challenging schools? Inquiring minds want to know. When are we going to discontinue extended day in our renewed schools? A lot of new teachers coming out of college don't want to sign contracts with NPS because they don't want to work extended school days. They don't want to work two weeks early in the summer, don't want to come on Saturdays. And teachers who are at some of the renewed schools are seeking transfers. And this renewed schools extended day program has not improved academic performance at all or school climate or culture. So we need to discontinue our extended school days. Why are so many students receiving summer learning packets in our schools while others are not receiving not one? When is the board going to commence its superintendent search for newer public schools? When is the board going to begin planning the demise of our One Newark Enrollment Center and create an alternative to this fiasco? We want to invite you to the Donaldson hearings. Some of our non-tenure teachers who are doing a fantastic job are... Have been given letters of termination. We're gonna be at the Donaldson hearings next week on the 27th to support some of our teachers at 13th Avenue School who have received letters of termination, who are phenomenal teachers. One actually is our 2017 Teacher of the Year by the PTA, and we're here tonight and to support him and let you know that board members, we look for you to be at the Donaldson hearings as well. And hopefully, in the upcoming school year, we'll see more board members in our schools and attending school functions. I hope that you will be at some of the graduations that will be commencing for the rest of the week. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. That is the end of our speakers' list.
Mr. Chair.
Board member Gaddy.
Thank you. I just want to correct the first statement that Mr. Cabanas stated. Again, as I said at the business meeting, I was never appointed to the Transparency Committee. I was the one that brought up the issue that when was the Transparency Committee going to meet for six straight months? In terms of when you said I vetoed a vote, that's where my confusion was. And I also stated that the Transparency Committee is a committee that needs to be transparent on all issues and concerns about the district and not just one Newark enrolls program or project. I think that that is something that is incorrect. The way that it was put together was incorrect. You didn't have the input of any board members, the selection of the individuals, and I can go on and on. So I will also state for the record again, that is misinformation. Never was I also the chair or appointed. I put out information on Facebook, as I can do as a parent of this district, to inform other parents, to empower them with the information, and give them the opportunity to submit their name. So that's what I was doing, and I will continue to do that, because like I told you at the business meeting, I am the only board member up here with a student in the Newark Public School District. I am the only one. I will continue to fight for them and all children in this district. I don't sway on that, on one way, and that's the way I'm always gonna be. And we could talk further on that. The other thing that I want to say is in terms of instruction. The Committee for Instruction, I do want to say...
She should be tested. She's responding for...
I...
I responded to the question. In terms of instruction, there were some concerns about Malcolm X Shabazz. There were some concerns about the strategic plan from two individuals talked about the strategic plan, but Ms. Gregory talked about the strategic plan. I would just make a recommendation, because we did talk about this two months ago at the Instruction Committee, Leah, for a presentation on the benchmarks of where we are with our three-to... Our three-to-five-year strategic plan. So although I'm not on Instruction Committee this year, I would just like to make that recommendation again, because it was told to us that we will be getting six months and three months updates on what was happening with the strategic plan. And I think if that happens, that will help us. So I'm gonna put that back on the record to be recommended to that committee. As well as the Malcolm X Shabazz concerns in terms of facility by Ms. Jackie and Ms. Walter, I want to make the recommendations to our Operations Committee, because we talked about that also, Tave, the chair. So can you kindly put that on the agenda so we can have the appropriate time to discuss those matters? And then also for Mr. Jones, Lucius Jones, I don't know if you're here. I did attend along with Shay and Flo, Isha, to the university graduation today. And my daughter, who attended to take pictures for one of her best friends, all of the speakers, the salutatorium, the valedictorian, and the class president did make some comments that was very disheartening, and I didn't hear it in that negative tone until my daughter brought it to my attention, that they was constantly told, some of them had been at university since sixth grade, that they were the worst class. And I don't... I don't understand how that could have been told to our students, but their whole demeanor during the graduation, we kept saying, why are these students not happy? What is going on? So I just hope that there can be an investigation as to what happened, and maybe we could talk to some of the students so we could learn as to what was really upsetting them on this day that should have been a great day for them, was just seen. I mean, they just didn't even want to be present. So it is something that we do need to look into, and I hope we will. And then also, on the last note, in terms of just also the investigation into American history, I just want to make that recommendation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Mr. Lewis, may I respond, please?
No, 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 no.
Can I just... This is a public meeting. We have to get the truth out to the community.
There's no back and forth.
I'm just gonna say...
Commander, Mr. Cabana.
What I want to say is to clarify for last week, what you did say was...
Mr. Cabana.
Cabanas, there's no back and forth. Thank you. Mr. Cabanas, public participation is over, sir.
Which is why I provided the voting records, that you did vote against the transparency.
Mr. Cabanas. Mr. Cabana.
Thank you. Public participation is over, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Cabanas, public participation is now closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabana. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Thank you. Thank you. So, any... Any other board members have anything to say? So I just wanted to... Mr. Cabana, I just wanted, as the chair of this board, apologize for the tone that you were spoken to by a board member on this board. That's not... I don't condone that tone to any residents in the community, because we work for you. So I just wanted to apologize. So, I wanted to just address some things as well. I did attend a PTA meeting at Science Park High School. This is my... Was my second PTA meeting, attending and having people from the state and the county level there. And the tone in which they speak to our people at our schools are disgraceful. I don't appreciate the way they talk to our people, like they don't know nothing, like they talk to them like they're illiterate. They talk to them like they're beneath them. So that was one of the reasons why, as the chair of this board, I said the first thing I wanted to do was reactivate the Parent Advisory Council to replace the PTA, so we can have our own organization that people can respect us, because we can't allow people to continue to come in our district and speak down on our parents, our students, our staff members, and the leadership of the PTA state level and county level. I could call them out if they got a problem with what I'm saying, they knew where I'm at. I did not... I did not appreciate their tone in which they presented while I sat in those two meetings. So if it was up to me, we will boycott New Jersey PTA and County PTA until they learn how to respect our parents and our teachers and administrators in this city. So, excuse me. Ms. Johnson, I didn't ask you to speak. I was speaking. Thank you.
But the parents don't be respected enough.
Ms. Johnson, you had your time. You had your time. Ms. Jacks, Johnson, you had your time. You had your time.
They have to be respected here first.
You have to respect me. I'm talking. Are you... Okay? That's respect. It's a two-way street. It's a two-way street.
Okay, but we need to be respected here.
Thank you. Thank you. So, back to what I was saying. Back to what I was saying. So I strongly encourage people, over the summer, the information will be out about our planning sessions, listening sessions throughout the city, on planning to create the Parent Advisory Council in this city. So I tell you, want to be involved. Again, be involved. Again, be involved. If you're not involved, you can't complain. If you can't... If you're not involved, you have no room to cry. If you're not involved, you can't cry when things ain't your way. So I ask you to be involved through this.
Right.
Thank you.
We can be involved for the last...
I ask you to be involved.
And we can't find our applications when we...
Also, also the Transparency Committee, I wanted to correct one thing, Mr. Cabana. I do want to correct, as you said. I did say that the Ms. Johnson application wasn't in, but I was... I was corrected by administration. Her application was received, so I want to correct that on the record. And I do, for your question, do you submit again? If... I don't condone you not to submit again. If you want to submit, you... Because it was a mistake on the district, you can submit again.
Well, I'm submitting.
Ms. Johnson.
But you have it, so...
And that's it far as public speaking. Oh, Mr. Brown, he left?
No, he's back here.
Mr. Brown, I see you at 13th Avenue Graduation. All right?
Yeah.
All right, so our next order of business is our votes.
Are y'all gonna answer any of our questions?
Mr. Chair. I just want... Going back to the agenda?
Yes.
I want to separate a vote for 14 points. Are you going?
Let's do it 13 first. Scotty, let's deal with the issues under 13 first, right? So, under 13, Mr. Chair, Finance and Operations, there's item 13-1 through 13-48. You want a motion to take them as one?
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
On second?
Second.
Is this 13?
Yeah. This is a motion to take all items under 13 as a package. That'll be all finance, operations, purchasing, and facilities, 13.0 through 13.48. This is a motion just to take them as a package. Is there a question? Mr. Bessso? Sure.
13-11, the approval of the obsolete buses. I want to pull that item, because if you look at the resolution, it states that these particular assets were resold. And my question is, what is the process of selling assets? Do we sell them and then come to the board for a resolution? Or we come to the board first and then sell the asset?
Manabea?
That was concerning to me.
Um, this particular item...
Rob, can you pull up the resolution, please?
I think if I remember correctly, these buses were brought before the board indicating that we were going to sell them. I don't have the exact date at this point in time, but I will look it up. This is advising the board that the items have been sold. The district by statute has the ability to get rid of obsolete items. How we do that is by public bid and actually have people bid to say what they would pay for an item.
I appreciate that, but the question I'm raising is that I don't know when this was sold, and I don't recall since I've been on this board that the selling of buses.
The items were brought to the board before you came on the board, so I don't have the actual date in my mind right now, but I will find the item and share it with you.
I just... The history will be in the resolution. I can now enact those questions.
Okay.
Do you... Are you... Do you want to vote separately, or you're... Okay.
I appreciate that.
Sure. You can get the history... How would you like to handle that, Manabea? Okay.
We're going to vote on the item.
Okay. Any other board members have any issues with any items to 13.48? All right, so we had a motion to take these items together. This is just to take the items together. It's moved by Von Seka, second by Padilla. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or saying? Okay, we're gonna take them together.
What are they voting on?
That was a... That was a motion to take all the items together. Whoever said that, anyone?
They're voting on...
Oh, okay. We said, once again, it's Finance and Operations, okay? Purchasing and Facilities issues under item 13. Is there a motion to actually vote on these items?
Motion.
Okay, on second?
Second.
Good deal. This is a motion to vote on all items under 13, Finance and Operations, Purchasing and Facilities. Roll call. Mr. Bessso?
Yes.
Ms. Von Seka?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
All items under 13, Finance, Operations are approved. Next, General Counsel. Ms. Gaddy, you had an issue?
Yes, I want... I want a separate vote under 14.4, the resolution for the 2017-18 Legal Services.
Okay. 14.4 what? Four?
14.4.
Okay. Should we take each one separately, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gaddy. Let's take these separately then. The first one is item 14.2, it's renewal of insurance, purchasing reference 8816. Is there a motion?
Hold it.
Padilla? Your second?
Second.
Garcia? It's a motion to vote on item 14.2, renewal of insurance, purchasing, reference. Roll call. Bessso?
Yes.
Ms. Von Seka?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Padilla?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, 14.2 passes. Next item is 14.3, resolution regarding OFAC. Yes. Is there a question?
One second.
I'm sorry. A board member's vote?
No, it's not up.
Okay, sorry.
You gotta hold with the mic. You could hold with the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was called. It's 14.1 now. You got it.
All right, it's originally 14.2?
Yeah, but when it's called, it goes...
Okay. Okay. Is the next... Okay, so is the next item still 14.3?
Yeah.
No, 16.3.
It's okay, Mr. Art, we got it.
It was cold. It was 14.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
All right, it's originally 14.2?
Yeah, but when it's cold, it goes 16.
Okay. Okay, so is the next item still 14.3?
Yeah.
No, 16.3.
It's okay, Mr. Art, we got it.
Okay, it's on my screen, it's 14.3. All right, so next, okay, I'll use that big screen. 16.2, resolution regarding OFAC Review and Corrective Action Plan, legal expenses. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Bledsoe, second, um, Von Sekka? Roll call. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Von Sekka?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Motion carries, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, yes, 3 abstain. On to Program Instruction.
Did you vote? Did you vote?
All right, so we have Participation and Future Ready, Authorization, District Field Trips. Motion to take them together?
Yeah.
Ms. Gaddy wants to take them together, is there a second?
Second.
Padilla, this is a motion to take the Program Instruction items together, just to take them together, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? We're going to take them together. Can I have a motion to actually vote on the Program Instruction items?
Move it.
Second.
Padilla, Bledsoe. This is a motion to approve the two Program and Instruction votes, moved by Mr. Padilla, second by Mr. Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries, Program and Instruction items are approved. Thank you, Board. Next on the agenda?
Old new business.
Mr. Chair.
Old new business, on Ms. Gaddy.
So I do want to make a recommendation, and I just also want to say, Marquise, I guess I get caught up in passion, and you don't ever have to apologize for how I respond. I can speak for myself, but if you felt this tone was a little bit what it shouldn't be, that is something that we should talk about at our retreat in terms of all of us as board members, ensuring that we become the best board members that we can become. And so this is what I'm going to bring up, this next item, in terms of us being able to ensure that if there is something going on that we don't quite agree with, we should be able to police each other. So there was an issue that I brought up with the legal representation about a potential ethics violation to the district. So I'm hoping that it's on the agenda on the 8th. I did speak with the board members, I spoke with everyone that needed to be spoken with. But my problem is, when we bring concerns to the district, that we say there's a problem, then the district should respond accordingly. If I bring the information to the Board President, then I'm expecting action to be taken, so that I should not have to come back and bring this up in new business. So just like you want to police me if you think I said something that wasn't appropriate, we have to continue to support and police each other when we think there's a potential ethic violation. I think that it's also important that as we are talking about this July 8th retreat, we spent a lot of time coming together on what our goals will be for the upcoming year, what our code of conduct will be. And as we are beginning to, we go back to local control, there are certain expectations at each and every one of us, and we have not voted on those items that we put forth. I know it was presented, I think, last month by Ms. Wilson. So I'm hoping that the work that we put in at these various retreats and coming up with our code of conduct, with items that we hold dear and close to us on how we should act as a Board, and how we should also interact with the district. I don't want that to just be something that we put in writing, and it never comes into action or fruition. So I'm hoping that, I don't know what the agenda is, but I'm hoping that you at least share what the agenda is, and I want to make sure that these items that I'm bringing up is definitely on that agenda. It is important that we know what our goals and objectives are. It is important that we are informed in a timely manner also of what we will be discussing on the 8th as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. So I just wanted to just quickly make some remarks. So at the reorganization meeting on May 2nd, I made commentary during one of the votes. I felt, and still continue to feel that it was needed, and it continues to be relevant in this political environment, and particularly around this school board. When it comes to my role as a board member and public education in general, I am not warm and fuzzy. I'm serious, and I'm about my business, and it works for me, and I will continue to be that way. And I think that people who have interacted with me over time recognize that and don't feel that I have ill intent, even when my remarks are very sharp. So, but even in that, and having conversations with both Board Chair Lewis and Vice Chair Padilla the evening before, about why I disagree with that particular vote, that evening, Board Chair Lewis's family was in the audience, and it was related to me later on by Mr. Lewis, that his family felt disrespected by some of my comments. And for that, that was not my intent, so it is not any problem for me at all to apologize for that. But I do, you know, just want to make clear that there are going to be things that are going to be said, that people are going to disagree with, and we're going, a lot of times we're also going to agree, but it's never my intent, 99% of the time, it's not my intent to be disrespectful. Nobody's 100% of anything. But I will speak my truth to power and what I believe is right and what needs to happen in this district, but I did not mean to disrespect anyone. So, Mr. Lewis, I hope that you will accept my apology on behalf of your family. And I just feel that, along with Board Member Gaddy's comments just mentioned earlier, that it's all a learning process, and we are, you know, we're all human beings, and we're moving together, one as a Board, and that we need to make sure that we are having conversations with each other about what's happening, before we make any sort of rash decisions based on just simply emotion or our personal feelings, because at the end of the day, it's about the students of Newark, and we have to do what's best for them. So I appreciate the fact that we are able to move on from that situation, and I think that we'll continue to do that during this school year and be able to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Owens. Anyone else?
I just would like to say, welcome to Ms. Matos, welcome you to this Board. The reason why we all sit around this table is because of our students. So from me to you, if I can assist you in any way, I welcome you to this Board, I welcome your family, and if I could lead you throughout this process, just let me know. So, thank you.
Anyone else? So before we close out, I just felt to mention two things. One is, as we go to local control, this Board is looking for things to help prepare us to make us more effective as a governing body, and we've been looking at other districts across the country, and one committee that I feel is necessary and that we have to build on this Board is a governance committee. That committee will be led by Vice President Tae Padilla. Also, Board Member Dashay Carter have been asked to be a part of that committee. That committee also will be appointed a member from the Superintendent Office, and also someone from the legal department. That is just to help the Board govern, become more effective, deal with training for the Board members, deal with making sure that we're in line, and that we're doing everything that we're supposed to do in order to lead this district effectively as a governing body. So it's still one more seat available on that committee. I haven't made that decision who that third person is going to be, so any board member that's interested, just let me know that you're interested, so we can fill that committee, so that we can be a more effective Board. And lastly, I want to thank all my board members who have been going to graduations, have been attending school functions, to make us more visible, more accessible out in the community, and we are off to a great start. I wanted to let everyone know that I'm not perfect, but I'm striving to be better than I was yesterday. So I ask you to pray for this Board, pray for our school district, pray for our children, and most of all, pray for this city. Thank you, God bless you all. Can I get a motion? Motion.
Bledsoe, second. Garcia, all in favor, motion adjourned. Anybody opposed? Okay, that's it, meeting is adjourned. Good night, have a good summer, see you in August.